Recording? Hello, everybody. Welcome to the calculus two. I should really decide what I'm gonna say before I click record. Calculus two, session number three. Today, we're doing the practice for the mini test number three, which is gonna be 3.4 partial fraction decomposition and 3.7 and/or really 3.7 improper integrals. Okay, here's my beautiful intro. I will be showing my calculus notes at the beginning of this livestream. People watching the video can find it in a link in the description. So let's transfer over. Here are my notes for 3.4. So it's honestly, I, I, it's hard to explain partial fraction decomposition in words, which is why actually in this section, I even put an example here. So I, I wouldn't really do usually in my notes, but I think it's, it's mostly illustrative with a, with an example. But in general, the idea is, is that, well, you, you can't integrate that, right? You can't, I mean, you can't, but it's hard to tell just by looking at it, how to integrate that, right? There's no U sub, there's no, there's no, uh, what's it called? Integration by parts or trig sub or anything like that. So we have to figure out how to turn it into something like this, which is something that we can integrate, right? These are equivalent. So partial fraction decomposition is the way that you do that. Okay, in general, um, you do long division, right? Polynomial long division. Like so if you just have a general, uh, you know, ratio of two functions here that you're trying to integrate. So start by dividing them, if you can, okay? And then factor the denominator, right, into linear factors like x plus one, x minus three, two x plus five, whatever. And then quadratic factors, right? And you have quadratic factors. Which, which would be like, if you, if you have like a five dimensional, five dimensional, five degree five polynomial in the denominator, then you could, you might be able to break that up into like three linear factors and a quadratic factor. The quadratic factor would then not be able to be factored in the real numbers, right? So you just do that. And then you use that to equate the original fraction, the original rational function to a sum of the other fractions. And then, so this part here equating it, that's where the whole actual integral, uh, partial differential, partial differential, partial fraction decomposition happens, right? And then that, so that's the most complicated step, um, and integrate the sum of the fractions instead, instead of the original fraction. So you're breaking the big fraction into a bunch of little fractions. That's the whole point. And then, so generally, you can really think of this as like a for loop, right? A for loop and a bunch of if statements for how to make those fractions, right? So it depends on each, so for each factor of the denominator, I should say, for each factor of the denominator, if it's linear, make a fraction that looks like this. Right? And so, uh, the top is just a number that we, um, don't know, but we solve for. Um, and if it appears twice, then you make two of them, right? But one time it's squared, and this extends the appearing nine, end times. So if you have like three times, it would be power of one, power of two, power of three. Okay. And then a quadratic factor works like this. You have to have a linear thing on the top, ax plus b, and similar to what that is. Now again, this is a lot to explain in words, right? So let's do examples of this, of course. But generally, if you want a for loop, so here's our for loop, for each factor, again, it's just a for each factor of the denominator. If it's linear, if it's linear and appears twice slash end times, if it's an irreducible quadratic, and if it's an irreducible quadratic that appears end times, do that. Okay. And then here's an example, but I won't go through the example. Maybe quickly, I will just share this document in Discord, so people can see it. So I'm going to be putting it in homework help. So in homework help now, there is the PDF of this document. Okay, so maybe let's start with just an example now. Do people want me to start with a difficult example, or do people want me to start with just a regular example? That more
Medium.
Difficult.
Maybe let's, difficult? This one, this one is, this one's kind of a regular example, as in, it doesn't do anything super crazy, but it's pretty much as hard as the regular questions can be. The things that get, you know, so it has irreducible quadratic factors and it has, you know, it has, yeah, so maybe we'll do this one in my notes here. I won't read the notes. I'll just actually do it on the screen, right? So this is our first example. Is everybody good with that? Pretty much the hardest that the regular kind of questions can be.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so, uh, for this example, we're gonna be integrating x squared over x cubed minus x squared plus four x minus four dx. Okay, so we have a uh, a ra- a ratio of a degree two polynomial and a degree three polynomial, right? So I can't divide this. Right? I can't, uh, because the degree on the top has to be higher, right? So I also can't do a U sub, because what U sub would I do? Nothing. Right? I couldn't do x cubed. I couldn't do the whole denominator, because the numerator is not a multiple of the denominator, of the derivative of the denominator. So I'm gonna have to do partial fraction decomposition. So again, there's no, um, there's no like, what's it called? Division that's gonna be happening here. So I have to find a zero of this, right? So I have to figure out what a zero of this is. Now, okay, I can't, I, we don't know how to factor a cubic, just there's no like, well, there is a cubic formula, but it's not very nice. So we don't really use a cubic formula. So to figure out how to factor this denominator, we're gonna need to find a zero of it, of course, right? So to find a zero of it, what we do is we use, um, we use rational root theorem. Right? Or you can just try to guess a, a, a factor, of course. So first, let me show rational root theorem, and then I'll just show guessing it. So rational root theorem is a way to figure out what a root would be. And in that, it's saying, it's saying like, okay, of course, it could be any number, but there's a few numbers that it most likely is. In fact, it's gonna be one of these numbers. Okay, so those numbers are, you, you take the factor at the end here, right? And just, you can just take the absolute value of it, right? So that's four. So you take that number. You take the leading coefficient, which is one. Right? Leading coefficient is one. And so then you take the factors of those numbers. So the factors of four are four, two, and one, and the factors of one are one. Okay, and then you do the ratio of all these things, four, four over one, plus or minus four over one, plus or minus, uh, two over one, plus or minus one over one, which is just one. So one of these two, four, six numbers, there's six numbers here, so it's usually plus or minus four, plus or minus two. One of these six numbers will be a root to that. So we've just really narrowed it down. In fact, we've infinitely narrowed it down by doing this. So again, it's, it's, it's the ratio of all the factors of the last number, which I'll call d, over the leading number, which I call a, all the factors of this over the factors of this, right? Every combination. Of course, if you had more factors here, it would be more combinations, and you'd start getting a lot. But yeah, one of these numbers will be a root, and how you check is you just plug it in and do you get zero here? Okay, so I'm gonna tell you that one is a root, positive one, which is one of them that we have, positive one. And I'll show you. So, uh, one cubed minus one squared plus four times one minus four. So this is gonna be one minus one plus four minus four, which is zero. Since zero is a remainder, that means that x minus one, since we put in positive one, x minus one is a factor, is a factor of the denominator. Okay, kinda squished at the end there, but yeah. So again, rational root theorem figured out what possible things could be the root. So we have six options. I'm, you know, you can check all of them. I'm telling you, uh, positive one, which is one of the two options here, was a root. Okay, which means that x minus one is a factor of our denominator there. Okay, so now what we have to do is we have to, uh, factor that out of this, right? Factor this, factor x minus one out of this, okay? And essentially, what we're doing is we're doing this denominator divided by this, right? Okay, so we, we literally have to do that. Okay, so we're gonna do this denominator, x cubed minus two, uh, minus x squared. And of course, anybody stop me if anything I said doesn't make sense. And we're gonna divide that by x minus one. Okay, sorry, my writing's bad. So let's check here first. Okay, how do we, how do we divide polynomials? Well, I, how I like to think about it is, is just, okay, well, this times what gives me this? X cubed, uh, x, x squared, sorry, x squared. And then, so that's what goes up here, x squared, and then now we multiply back. So x times x squared is always gonna be that thing in the front. Okay, and then we multiply again. X squared times negative one is negative x squared. And then we subtract. So this minus this is zero. Negative x squared minus minus x squared, again, that's, that's gonna be zero. So we just got zero here. And that's not good. Is it good? No, maybe that is good.
Well, isn't it good, cause like it shows that you did the division properly, it's a factor or something?
Yes, but that's not the factor.
You can just
You just use the four x now.
Bring four x. Yeah.
You still continue.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. There we go. There we go. That's what it is. Yeah. So we, there's still minus, so, so, um, four x minus zero is four x, minus four minus zero is minus four. Okay, there we go. For a second, I thought that messed up. So this is zero, zero, right, adding together. Okay, now, we ask, okay, well, um, x times what gives me four x? Plus, plus four. Shouldn't really write it here.
Uh, shouldn't you have the minus x first?
Minus x? Where, where's the minus?
Yeah, and then you divided x squared by x, right?
Divided x, where, I divided x cubed by x. And then that's
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now I'm asking, right, pretty much I'm dividing x to the, uh, four x by x, and so then that's giving me four, which is gonna go over here, right? Yeah. And then now, so, and the way I like to ask that when I'm doing polynomial division is say, well, this times what gives me this? Which is an equivalent question. It's just a little easier for me to figure out in my head. Um, so
Couldn't you have grouped this by solving, I mean, solved by grouping?
Uh, factor, like factor by grouping?
Yeah, cause the four comes out, the x squared comes out, and that would be x minus one. Instead of doing all this.
The four comes out? So factor out the four from here?
Yeah, and you get x minus one.
Oh, yeah, you would get x minus one. You're right. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that would work. Factor out the four from here, factor out the x squared from here, you'd have a term of x minus one, x minus one, factor out the x minus one. You'll have x minus one plus, um, it would be x squared plus four. Sorry, x, x minus one times x squared plus four. Yeah, which is, which is what we're gonna get, which is what we're gonna get here, right? So now, again, I multiply four x, so four x here, and then minus four here, uh, and then I subtract, and I get zero, zero. So what I'm left with is that this polynomial divided by this is gonna give me x squared plus four, uh, times x minus one. Right? So what we have now, and so, yeah, that, that would work. It wouldn't work for every polynomial. That was just a, it happened to be that there's a helpful thing here that, that factors, right? So I think it's, it's good to know how to do polynomial division, cause that'll actually always get you the answer. But yeah, x, that would work for here. So x squared plus four, x minus one, that's what we factored the denominator to. So I can rewrite that. So the integral is now x squared over x squared plus four x minus one dx. So now we're ready to do partial fraction decomposition. Um, so to do that, I'm just gonna forget about the integral for a second here, and I'm just gonna write the fraction. I'm trying to figure out what this fraction is equivalent to. Okay, so for each factor, remember, it's like a for loop, right? So for each factor, um, I'm gonna write a new fraction. So for this first factor, factor, x squared plus four, that's an irreducible quadratic factor, which means the numerator has to be ax plus b. Right? Ax plus b, right? A and b are just two, some, some two constants that we don't know. And the denominator is that factor. It only appears once. It's not like, it's not like squared, it's not squared here, right? So we're done with that one. Moving on to the next one, well, that x minus one, that's a linear factor, so the top is gonna be some constant we don't know. No, 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 I can't speak. And, um, then x minus one on the bottom, right, our actual factor. Okay, so now we have to figure out what a, b, and c are. So, uh, we know this is true, this equation, we, we've said it was true. So now, I'm gonna multiply both sides by the denominator here. So this is gonna be just an x squared over here. This is gonna be ax plus b times x minus one, and this is just gonna be c times x squared plus four. Right?
We have a question, we have a question.
Yeah.
What do you know to put ax plus b? Why not just put, like, how do you know how they have to put that and not just a?
Because this is a quadratic factor on the bottom. See, it's a, it's a quadratic expression? So the numerator has to be a linear factor, ax plus b.
So the numerator is just like, one degree lower than the denominator?
Mm-hmm, exactly. It's one degree lower than the denominator. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
This is a general one, and this is a degree zero, exactly. So this is degree one, this is degree zero, so one degree lower. That's right. Okay, so now we gotta solve for, um, we have to solve for a, b, and c. We can sub in x equals one, in this case, right? So generally, I like to do the linear algebra way of doing it, right? That's how I always do it. Um, but I do realize that that's slower than the quicker way of doing it. So maybe I'll do both. Um, actually, actually, it's up to you guys, maybe, if you want me to do both. But I'll show you the quick way to do it. Well, I noticed right now, it's not really gonna, the quick way is not gonna help me with this. So actually, you know what? I may as well just do it linear algebra. But it will help me find c, because if I set x equal to one, this term goes to zero, so this whole thing goes to zero. And then we just have an expression with c, I can just solve for c. Right? So you wanna look for something you can put in that will turn one of the expressions to zero, and you can just solve for one variable. That's mostly useful when you have only linear factors, though. Um, because I don't think that would help me here. I mean, especially because this has no real zeros, right? That has no real zeros, so there's nothing I can put in there to make that zero. Uh, no real number that I can put in there to make that zeros. And so, yeah, it won't actually help me. So you know what? I'm just gonna do the linear algebra way of doing it. We've all taken linear algebra, so I think we're good. I'm good doing that. So um, I will write x squared equals, now I'm gonna foil here, so ax squared minus ax plus bx minus b plus cx squared plus four c. Okay, and now, I'm just gonna group all the x squared terms together, all the x terms together, and all the constant terms together. So a plus c x squared plus b minus ax plus, uh, four c minus b, just constant. Gonna make sure I got everything, the two cs, two x's, and two constants. So if you look on the left side, right, we don't have any x terms, we don't have any constant terms. What that tells me is that b minus a equals zero, and four c minus b equals zero. And the coefficient here is one, so a plus c equals one. Right? So this is good. This is helpful, right? We have three equations, three unknowns. We can solve this now, again, using a linear algebra method. Um, I won't do it with a matrix, though, cause it's simple enough, I don't have to. So I'll just say b equals a. Right? I will go over here and set this to, uh, four c minus, well, four c equals a. So using this equation, four c equals a. And now I just have a, a two, uh, yeah, two unknowns, two variables and two, uh, two equations and two unknowns. Four c equals a, a plus c equals one. Right? I can plug that into here. This is just a normal way of solving. Four c plus c equals one, five c equals one, c equals one fifth. Right? Um, and, sorry. Got different numbers when I did this before.
Can you scroll up? I think you didn't, um, shouldn't it be ax cubed technically?
Where?
Cause you're multiplying. Ax plus b times x minus one.
Where would the cube come from, though? Which, which multiplication?
Ax times x. Oh, sorry, wow. I'm really
Don't worry, don't worry. Don't worry. That's all right, that's all right. Take a moment, take a moment. It's okay. Yeah, no, we'll be good. Although I did make a mistake here, because I got different numbers before. Oh, no, you know what? No, 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 I didn't get different numbers. Uh, let me see how I did that. Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't get, never mind. We're okay. Um, yeah, yeah, we're good. Never mind, didn't make a mistake. I, all I did that's different than my sheet is that I called this b, c, and this one was a. So that's the only, that's why it was different, right? But the actual solution will be the same. So I didn't make a mistake. Okay, we know c equals one fifth, so then I can take this equation, in fact, actually, I can take this equation, right? I could take, so I'll box that answer. Um, I know that four c equals a, so four over five equals a. There's another thing we know. And since we know b equals a, we also know b equals four over five, which is the same thing that I got before. Okay. Okay, we have all our three constants. So knowing this now, I know that I can rewrite this, right? I solved for a, b, and c here. I can take this equation, this rational thing, right? And rewrite, um, using these constants that I got, a, b, and c. Come on. I'll just restart one.
Wow, that was trippy.
Yeah. I always wait for someone to mention something about that. Okay, so, uh, now that we know a, b, and c, I can, let me just check if anyone's saying anything in the chat. Okay, we're good. Now that I know a, b, and c, I can rewrite this. So this is x squared over, well, you know what? I'll just say equal sign, because that's our integral. That's the thing we're integrating. Uh, a was four over five, so it's four over five x plus four over five, right? Over x squared plus four. Right? Put that there, just in case I make a mistake. Um, and then c is one fifth. So I'm gonna write that as one over five x minus one. And there you go. So we're looking for the integral of this, right? We're looking for the integral of that. So in order to integrate this, well, I can, if these are equal, I can integrate the other side instead, and that's significantly easier now. Um, notably because I can separate this into two different integrals. Okay, so this is the integral of, and in fact, I'll write it like this, four fifths the integral of x plus one over x squared plus four dx plus one fifth the integral of, uh, one over x minus one dx. Okay, that second one is just one fifth lawn absolute value x minus one. Okay, we're good with that. The second one here, I mean, the, the first one here. So how do we do this now? I can't reduce the denominator anymore. I can't do any more partial fractions, because I would just get this. This is the partial fraction. So what do I do? Well, there's uh, two things I can do. Let me think for a second how I do this. Okay, so I, of course, can separate this into two fractions. So we might do that. I'm just trying to think if there's any other way to do it. So we can separate that into two fractions. I'm not saying that's wrong. Probably will work. I'm just trying to think. Uh, yeah, and you'd get
Isn't there a tan equation for that?
Yes. Well, not for, not for with something in the numerator, but with, for something in the denominator, yes, there is. Yeah, okay, so it looks like we have to do that. I was thinking, the, so the derivative of the bottom is two x, right? Um, and that's not on the top, right? That's not at all on the top. Uh, so there's nothing really else we can do. We have to separate this into two different fractions. So this is gonna be
But can't you multiply by two and divide by two? That's how we did it in our class.
You, to do a U sub, to do a U sub here?
No, like in Dr. Modis' class, he taught us that if in the denominator, it's like you take the derivative of it, and if it's not in the top, so you multiply and divide by it, so you could take the one out, like one over two outside, and then two x would be in the top then.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, and, and take that into, we're essentially gonna do that, but just we're splitting up the integral, right? So it's a similar, a similar idea. Uh, it's just that, this way makes a little bit more sense to me, what I'm about to do, which is splitting up the fractions. But yeah, that works too. That works too. You would still have to split the fractions, though, at that point, though, wouldn't you? I don't know. We'll see. So here, um, this is gonna be x, x over x squared plus four dx plus four fifths integral, one over x squared plus four dx plus one fifth lawn absolute value x minus one. I don't know plus yet. It's fine. So for here, we can just say
It should be a negative with the lawn, the same?
It should be?
It's a negative one. Yeah, it's a negative one.
Why is it negative?
When we pick the integral. That's just how it is. It's a, the, I'm pretty sure it's a negative one.
I think it's not. I think it's positive lawn.
Yeah, I think it's positive. You're thinking of trig, like the thing of tan, I think. That's negative lawn cosec.
Yeah, that's possible that you're thinking.
It'd be negative with one minus x.
Yes, it would be negative if it was one minus x.
Yeah.
That might be what you're thinking of. Okay, I'm gonna keep
Why would it be negative if it was one minus x?
Because then you have to, if it's, then you have to, uh, multiply by the derivative of the bottom. Right? Because
Yeah.
If you're doing the U sub.
Yeah.
If you say u equals one minus, I, I'm sure you understand, but let me just, here, so d would be negative dx. In that case, but the other way around, it would just be dx. Okay, so then for this one, I'm gonna say, and I don't like using u for U sub, so I'm gonna say t equals, um, x squared plus four dt equals two, uh, two x dx. Um, and so now, I multiply by two on the top, so it's gonna be four over ten, uh, which is two fifths, four, four tenths, um, one over u du plus. And this is just a tan identity or tan integral.
It uses t and u at the same time.
That's a bad mistake. Okay, thank you. Yes. Uh, let me find the, that's not what I meant to open. Oops. Um, that's, let's see, uh, I'm trying to find the, um, tan identity, which I don't have here for some reason.
It would just be, um, tan inverse x by two.
Yeah, there we go, right? So this integral is basically this one, right? So be, uh, will be one over two, tan inverse. Hold on, that doesn't make sense. Yeah, it would be one over two. A squared, that's two squared, although that's not the answer I put. Did I put the answer wrong in here? Okay, let's see. So this would be four fifths, and I can just, I can just integrate this now. So yeah, that looks like it should be one half tan inverse. Yeah, it looks like I'm, I wrote it wrong in the solution there. Um, one half tan inverse two, uh, sorry, x over two. Like that. Uh, plus again, sorry, I'm getting a little messy. Plus one fifth lawn absolute value x minus one. Okay, and then integrating there is gonna be, uh, two fifths lawn absolute value t, but t is just x squared plus four. That plus two fifths tan inverse x by two plus one fifth lawn absolute value x minus one plus c. Um, and I can, um, yeah, that's, that's it. That's everything.
Hard interrupt. Um, like, I don't, I'm looking at the sheet that, uh, CPW gave us, and it's going back to, like, I have, it says the integral of dx over x is equal to negative lawn of the absolute value of x. It's negative lawn.
DX, uh, sorry, dx over x, yeah.
It's the negative lawn.
No, 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 here's the problem. I'm looking at the same, I had the same problem that you did. I was looking at it, and I'm like, wait, that looks like a negative, but that's just the top part of the equal sign cutoff. That's literally, I was thinking the exact same thing. I said the same thing. I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's supposed to be a negative, but it's just, it's just, it's just the top of the negative sign cutoff.
Amazing.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Problem solved. No, don't be sorry. That's good.
At least you caught it now, not tomorrow.
Exactly.
Wait, in the, in the, in the list of integrals that he gave us, down?
Yeah, and that one. Uh, in the integration formulas, it should be the third one on the top. It's messed up.
Okay, so I just wanna note that I'm, this, in my solution, this is four over five. I made the mistake here. I didn't multiply by two. I'm gonna check one from Alpha. Let's see what, um, what is the solution.
Wait, so where did you get the integral, the integral from, like the formula?
This formula here?
Yeah.
That's from calculus one. There's a chapter called integration resulting from trig inverse formulas, which is three point, no, no, it can't be three point something. Uh, five point something in, in calculus one, the textbook for calculus one.
Isn't it at the back of the calculus two textbook at the
Possibly.
Integral, integration paper or something?
Quite possibly.
Okay.
I got, this I got from the textbook one, but yeah, probably is there too. Uh, let me plug in the question. Just make sure we got it right. I got, this I got from the textbook one, but yeah, probably is there too, uh, let me plug in the question, just make sure we got it right. Of course, we could um, we could differentiate to figure out if we got it right, but I'm all right. Um, X squared, something. Um, something, whoops, something, so X, I'll do it from here, X squared plus four, X minus one. Um, so it is, well, writ- written, wrote it weird, but I don't know why, by by five. Yeah.
It's right, it's right.
Yeah, it is right, okay, factor out the.
It's just written weird.
Yeah, yeah, it is just written weird, but you just factor out the five, yeah, so it, this, this, this should be a two. Again, in my solution in the book, I'll fix it, I'll reup- re-upload it after, um, I have a four here, so this is a two out of four. Okay, good, so there's that question, that's pretty much the hardest, like a regular question can go, sorry, can you say that again?
He said you factored a five like eight.
A one fifth, factor out a, factor out a one fifth. So two lawn absolute, sorry, yeah, two lawn absolute value, uh, X the X, X squared plus four plus two tan inverse X over two plus lawn absolute value X minus one plus C.
Wait, can I see the question for a sec? Sorry, I just. Okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Okay, so is that?
Can you like re-say what you did in like the last three lines?
Last three lines here, sure, so this part right here?
Yeah, that whole part.
Okay, so I'll be able, maybe I'll start from here, or even from here, I'll start from here, so integrating each part separately, right? So this is what we got from our partial fraction decomposition, so integrating each part here, four fifths of this, plus one fifth of this. So, one fifth of this is just one fifth lawn absolute value X minus one, so you good with this part, this, this thing right here?
Yeah.
That's this part, right, then this part, I separated into two fractions, right? So, you can do that, if the numerator is a, is a product, um, a product is a, well, actually a product, but um a sum or a difference or anything like that, really, you can separate them. So it's gonna be, right, if you add these two fractions back together, it would be the same fraction as up here, and then just integrate them separately. So we have X over X squared plus four, um, and one over X squared plus four. X over X squared plus four can be solved with a U sub, so T equals X squared plus four, DT equals two, two X DX. And so, um, it's gonna be four over ten, cause I have to, I have to multiply by a half here to get that. Um, and then it'll just be one over T DT, which will be lawn absolute value T. Okay, so that's, that's this fraction, that's, that's this section here, right? Then this section here is a little bit more complicated, right, so we have a four fifths, and then one over X squared plus four. The only way I'm, I know to integrate this is by using this formula here, right, using this formula right here, which is that DU or one over A squared plus U squared DU is one over A tan inverse of U over A plus, right, so in this case, our A is two, cause this is two squared. And our U is X, and that's the only difference, it's gonna be one over two times tan inverse X over two. So that integrates into that, right? And then now we just uh add them all up, and then factor out a one fifth.
Wait, how'd you add four out of five to four, um, four out of ten?
How did that turn, how did this turn into this? That's the question, had a four fifth turn into a four tenth?
How did four tenth turn into four, two over five?
Um, well, because, well, uh, you're having a moment that, then think about, just divide top and bottom by two.
Oh, okay.
Divide top and bottom by two, right, uh, and then, it just like, the fraction reduces.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fraction reduces.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Fractions are hard.
Someone, you'd said earlier that the integral of, um, if it was one minus X, it would have been negative natural log. You said it, you showed it outside, but your face is kinda covering, it's a dangerous.
Yeah, so let me show you here, if I'm integrating um, one over X minus one DX that's gonna be lawn absolute value X minus one. Okay, I'll show, I'll show, I'll show why, right, because it's, you're gonna do a U sub here, it's gonna say U equals X minus one, DU equals DX. So this is gonna be equal to the integral of one over U DU, this is lawn absolute value U, which is lawn absolute value X minus one. Now, if I'm integrating one over one minus X DX, I'm gonna do a similar thing. U equals one minus X, DU equals negative DX. Right, so this is gonna be the negative integral of one over U DU. Which is negative lawn absolute value U, which is negative lawn, uh, negative lawn absolute value one minus X.
Check out problems, thanks.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so there's, those are two. Okay, so, um, how's everybody with this question? How's everybody feeling?
You said it was uh easy, hardest normal question.
Hardest, no, this isn't, this isn't the hardest question.
Do you have hard questions on you?
Horowitz questions, I probably, I also have some, some questions from the chat, which I think would be good to do. Yeah, I wanna see like, I wanna see some hard ones here.
Some logs and some trig in the function, and something like that.
Yeah, let's see. So, yeah, I have one here, which is not really a hard question. In fact, it's not a hard question at all, but we can go through it, but it, it might trip you up when you first see it. Okay, and then maybe right after this question, I'll start doing chat questions, okay? So, in, so this is our example from lecture, okay? So, uh, the integral of one plus E to the X over one minus E to the X DX. Okay, so this doesn't look like a partial fraction decomposition question just yet, and it isn't, hold on. What did I do? Oh, yeah, yeah. What?
Did you perhaps put like a negative into the function?
Let me look, let me look at this for a second, um.
I'm telling you, it's one of those days.
Yeah.
Or maybe it is E raised to the power of three X or two X or something, right?
No, I, I see what happened, I see what happened, I'm just, I just got confused by the confusing part of the question, that's all it is. So, that, that really, so here, okay, it looks like, it kinda looks like we're stuck, right? If I say, if I say um, U equals E to the X, while I have DU equals E to the X DX, okay, that's nice. Um, but I don't have an E to the X to multiply with here, right, I don't have an E to the X DX. I have a one plus E to the X DX, but that's not the same thing. Right, and so it, it, it doesn't look very good.
Wait, could I, we just split the fraction up to begin it?
We could split the fraction up, but then what would we do at that point? So we'd have one over one minus E to the X plus in, uh, DX, plus integral E to the X over one minus E to the X, okay, so this fraction, you could just do a, you could just do a U sub, but then what would you do here?
Would I ju- okay, this might be very wrong, but would I just be lawn of one minus DX?
Yeah, that sounds right to me. Lawn, if I, if I said T equals one minus E to the X, DT would be negative E to the X DX. Oh, but I wouldn't. Yeah, no, I would, it would, it wouldn't be lawn, because it wouldn't be lawn, because that only works if you have a, a, uh.
Power function.
Uh, degree one power function in the denominator. So once again, we're stuck with, I don't, I don't, I can't do a U sub here, so it's actually, it's actually better to start up here, doing it up there. So, what we have to do, and I think, when you have functions with E to the X, this is pretty much the only time this is actually useful to do. Uh, is to just multiply top and bottom by E to the X. Okay, so multiply top and bottom by E to the X, I'm adding this in, but I'm not changing anything, I'm multiplying by one, remember? Well, now I can do this, U equals E to the X, DU equals E to the X DX, okay, so integral. And in fact, I'm gonna say this is, no, no, I have to say it's, you like that, do I have to say that? Yeah, I do. So, this is gonna be one plus U over one minus U times U, DU. So you see how that was useful to do, right, okay, I have an extra U on the bottom, that's true, I, I have it there. That's, that's about how that E to the X was accounted for, it's another U, cause U equals E to the X, but uh, I could do the U sub now, and so that's good. So now, I can do, well, I can split up the fractions and actually, no, can do anything after that. I could split, I can split up the fractions. And I would have, I'd have trouble, because.
Well, do you have to do in other substitution to, uh, one, um, V plus one or one plus U, and then get whatever? You'd get a, you'd get a constant, I don't know.
Yeah, possibly, there is some sort of.
Yeah.
Like a T substitution I could do here, or V substitution, what, plus? But, the idea is, is that you can solve this with partial fractions now, right, that's, that's the main idea of this. Right, so we have a degree one on the top, degree two on the bottom, we can't divide.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we can do partial fractions on this, right, one over U, one minus U times U is equal to so it's a, first one's a linear factor, so I put a, a, a degree zero thing on the top, but just an A, plus B over U.
Yeah, okay.
This will have solutions, so it's gonna be one plus U over AU plus B, well, you know, I'll write it like this, plus B times one minus U. Just multiplied both sides by the denominator of this fraction. Okay, and so then one plus U equals A, in fact, I'll write it like this, A plu- um minus BU plus B.
Sorry, Adam.
Yeah.
Before you move on, I'm just confused about where one minus U times U came from, on the bottom.
Yeah, so, I mo- I chose to multiply by E to the X on top and bottom, on E to the X on top and bottom. So, E to the X DX is my DU, right? On the bottom, I'm gonna have one minus U times U. Because again, I chose to put E to the X there, so I have to count for it. Make sense?
Yeah, makes sense, thanks.
Good, no problem, no problem, so, now I know that, well, it's actually pretty easy to solve this, right? So, A, A minus B equals one, and B equals one. So, A minus one equals one, A equals two. Yes. Kinda lost where I was there, but yeah, that was right, yeah.
Wait, how do you get B equal on?
How'd I get what, sorry?
B equal on, I'm saying, I cannot.
So, the, the constants, right, so B is the only constant, that doesn't have a U attached to it, must be equal to the constants of the left side.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just B equals one, that's all, that's all there is on either side, right? So that'll tell me that, and then, A minus B must be equal to the coefficient in front of U. So A minus.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, and so then we know, um, these two things now, B equals one and A equals two. So I can rewrite this top fraction, which is the integral of one plus U over one minus U. U DU is equal to the integral of A is one, uh, sorry, A is two, so two over, uh, what was it, one minus U, yep. One minus U DU, well, no, you know, I'll add it together now, uh, plus one over U DU. B over U, so one over U, hey, this is a lot easier to integrate. This is two lawn absolute value, sorry, negative two lawn absolute value, one minus U plus lawn absolute value U plus C. Negative two, um, lawn absolute value, one minus U is, U was E to the X, so one minus E to the X plus lawn E to the X, lawn absolute value E to the X plus C, uh, which is negative two lawn one minus E to the X. Yeah, uh, lawn E to the X is X plus.
Where does the negative two come from?
Well, it, it comes from, first of all, I'm, I have it, this two moves to the front, like that, right? The two moves, so it's two times that integral, this integral is negative lawn one minus U. So it's two times negative lawn one minus U, so negative two times lawn one minus.
Oh, yeah, cause like it's negative U, not positive U.
Exactly, this is backwards, so the derivative of this is negative one, so you have to put the negative one in the front here. Because of this, which I explained.
Uh, correct, I feel wrong, but please call them, just go for a second, alright, so the first part, which is the natural log of one minus um, X, could you also bring that apart and get um, zero and um, negative X, or no?
Uh, no, like you're saying you wanna distribute the lawn across one and negative E to the X?
Cause isn't like, isn't, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it doesn't distribute like that, it doesn't distribute.
Okay.
That's it, it doesn't distribute, so.
Did you have to do the E to, like, did you have to multiply the top and bottom by E to the X in the first part?
Um, I don't, oh, where am I, I don't really see any other way to do it, in this case.
Couldn't you have just said, uh, DU is equal to E to the X DX, and then DU over E to the X is equal to DX? And then just do DU over U is equal to DX?
Yeah, that's the same thing, that's the same thing, this is, this is DU over, D- DU over U, right?
All right.
That's the same thing. Yeah, and you do the same partial fractions after that. Right, and so, multiplying top and bottom by E to the X, that's pretty much only useful for E to the X. Because it lets you have the thing that you're trying to U sub on the bottom, and it's actually useful to have it on the top. The derivative of that on the top, because E to the X is the derivative, and that's what you're trying to use up, so it's gonna be in there. So whenever you have an E to the X question, and you're getting confused, maybe think about that, can I multiply top and bottom by E to the X, and will that help me? It will let you do a U sub, I think always. Uh, it'll let you do a U sub, sorry, for E to the X, if that's your only X containing term, so. Or X, yeah, term. Okay, so that's a Horowitz question, so, and I think it's actually the last Horowitz. Yeah. It's the last Horowitz question, so I can do some others, although they're not particularly hard. Like, I guess they have the, they have using tan sometimes, tan inverse, they have using using uh, like irreducible quadratic factors, but again, not too hard.
Yeah, you should do one anyway, just till I get a sense of it.
Sure.
Can you do one of the tan inverse questions? Can?
Sure, let me see, I do wanna do some of the chat questions too, I did say I was gonna do that. Um, let me see, okay, maybe, maybe let's do, let's do the chat questions, and probably some of them will have E to the X to do, I mean, uh, tan inverse to do.
Do you want tan inverse questions, the lab?
Lab has them, yeah, okay.
Are we planning on doing any improper integrals?
Yes, yes, yes. We are, so I guess this will, this session will go a little long, because I wanna do that too. So, let's do this question, someone sent me, uh, and it's, it's a volume question, but it's a volume with integration question, so, it's okay. Um, so, this is a chat question, uh, volume. Okay, so, find the volume, well, just, can I just put this here, is that gonna work? Find the volume generated by revolving the area bounded by that, between that and that, around the Y axis, okay, not too bad. So, we have our function, right, so we're integrating from one to seven one over X cubed plus seven X squared plus six X. Okay, um. Oh, sorry, no, we're not finding, we're volume, sorry, okay, so, uh, let me, let me, uh, god, what, I'm gonna have to graph this somehow. Okay, let's graph it, and let's see what it looks like. So this is gonna be one over X cubed plus seven X squared. Squared plus six X. So it looks like. Looks like this. Looks like this, we're, we're finding the volume from one to seven. So that's this tiny little slice here, right? Did I type it in right? X cubed plus seven X plus six, yeah. This little slice here, uh, you can do this part without the graph, right? You can just, just, but just to give you a look at it, right? So to find the volume. Well, okay, we don't have any discontinuities in there, so that's good. I mean, there's no discontinuities in this chapter. So we want to integrate, I like doing. Um. Cylindrical shells. Because I don't have to square things. I think I've said that every single live session so far. So the cylindrical shells. Is, so the 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 surface area of a cylinder is two pi RH. Right, so it's gonna be two pi. Times the integral of R, so the radius is just the X value. And the height is one over. One over. X cubed plus seven X squared plus six X. There you go, integrated from. Yeah, from one to seven, that is right, it is from one to seven. That makes sense to me. And since our, we're going around the Y axis from, from the actual Y axis, not like moved around, uh, the radius is just X. Okay, so I'm going to um drop. The rest of the stuff. I don't wanna write two pi and seven and one all the time, so I'm, we're just gonna find the general antiderivative of this and then we'll apply it. X cubed plus seven X squared plus six X. DX, alright, I should have a DX there too. Okay, now this. We can. Let's see how we can do it.
You can factor out an X and then cancel it with the top and then have one over a quadratic.
Sorry, can you, can you say that again? What was it?
So factor out an X and then cancel it from the, from the one of the top.
Yeah, yeah. That's good, and uh, we're okay with doing that because uh. First of all, cause it makes sense, I guess, but also because zero is already restricted from the domain, right? So it's by doing that, you have to be restricting zero. You have to say there's a discontinuity at zero, but there already is a discontinuity at zero, so it's okay. So we're good.
We're finding the volume of something.
We're finding the what, sorry?
Whatever you find, the volume of something.
The volume generated by revolving this around the Y axis, right? So this is chapter six from. Do you want me to, do you want me to explain it though, what I'm doing?
Yeah, cause I kinda forgot, like I know it, but at the same time, I don't know, you know.
Essentially, I'm taking. This section here. Take a nice better screenshot. My mouse does like. It gets like momentum as I'm scrolling for some reason. So you have to like. Do it better. Go like that. Okay, definitely hard to see, but. Just do that quickly. So just a really quick. What is, what am I doing with? Volumes of rotation? So. This is some area here, right, from one to seven. Underneath here, there is some area, which is very small after a while, but it does exist, right? There is some area there. And I wanna know what the volume is, right? The what the volume of it is if I rotate it around the Y axis, right? So you can imagine it's kind of this like. Blade that's gonna be around, right? And it's gonna have a hole in the middle of it, right? It's gonna have a hole in the middle of it, if you were to rotate this around the Y axis. So the way I like to do it is by cylindrical shells, and cylindrical shells is by, is essentially saying, well, let's, let's take it. One shell at a time, right? If I draw this line, just that line, just the black one here, I meant, just that. Right, and I rotate just that around the Y axis, it would create this kind of cylinder, without the top and the bottom. If I find the surface area of that cylinder. So remember, it would, it would create some sort of cylinder like that around the Y axis, actually would go kind of like. That, but that's okay. Kinda look like that when I revolve around, just the black line, right? Then if I just find the surface area of that cylinder and integrate from one to seven. Right, all of them, add them all up from one to seven, which is what integration is, add them all up from one to seven. Then I'd have my volume. Right, so that's what I'm doing. The, the, the uh, the surface area of a cylindrical shell like that is two pi RH, R is the radius, H is the height. So the radius is the distance from the center, well, that's just X, right, for any random, random shell I choose, this one. It's just X, that's our radius. And the height, well, the height is defined by this. Always. So it's two pi RH. Integrated from one to, so the two pi is really inside, but it's a constant, so you just pull it out. Right, uh, integrated from one to seven. And so then you just integrate this function now from one to seven. So that's kind of a, that's a quick explanation. If you want more help with it, I can help you after, okay? But hopefully that made sense.
Yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, no problem. So. Uh, to integrate this, yeah, I would factor out a one from the bottom and cancel it, so it'd be X squared plus seven X plus six. Now, does this factor on the bottom? Well, I need two numbers that add. To seven and multiply. To six. Six and one makes sense, yep, one and six, one and six. So yes, this does factor into. Um, one over X plus one. X plus six DX. And now I can do partial fractions on this. So one over X plus one. X plus six equals A over. X plus one plus B over. X plus six. Multiply both sides by the denominator of the left one, so. Denominator here, gonna be one equals. A. X plus six plus B. X plus one. One equals AX plus six A. Plus BX plus B. One equals A plus B times X plus six A plus B. Okay, so now that I rearranged it, this tells me that six A plus B is equal to one. Right, and A plus B is equal to zero. Okay, so this isn't too hard. A equals negative B. Right, s- uh, negative. Six B plus B equals one. Negative five B equals one. B equals negative a fifth. And A equals a fifth. Okay, so there's our two. Things like that. Yep, that's good, and then. So then I can, if I wanna integrate, right, so if I wanna integrate one over X, what was it? X plus one, X plus six? Okay, DX. Equals the integral. Of um, A was a fifth, so one over five X plus one. Minus one over five X plus six. DX, this is a lot easier to do. Right, this would just be one fifth lon absolute value X plus one. Minus one fifth. Lon absolute value X plus six. So now I need to do the integration though, which I lost here, so it's two pi times the integral. Two pi times the integral from one to seven. Of what I said before, one over X plus X plus one. X plus six. DX. Um, which is the antiderivative, one over, uh, sorry, two pi times the antiderivative. One over five, in fact, I'll, well, I'll do it after the next step. Factor out an X, uh, one over five. Minus one over five lon. X plus six. C equals zero. Uh, evaluated from one to seven. So this is gonna be two pi over five. Times lon absolute value X plus one minus lon absolute value X plus six. Valuated from one to seven, so this is two pi over five times, okay, evaluated seven, that's lon eight. Minus um lon thirteen. Thirteen minus. Lon two. Don't need absolute values, lon two. Minus lon. Seven. Right, so two pi over five times um, nothing really cancels.
Couldn't you, couldn't you use those rules with like, if it's like subtracting, you like divide or something?
Yep, that's right, so this would be eight over thirteen. Minus lon two. Minus lon seven. So this is two pi over five lon eight over.
Question. Wouldn't it be lon? Negative two plus lon seven?
Alright, so this would be lon fourteen. Yep, that's right. And then this is. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Although, wouldn't this be the same thing minus? Lon of. No, that wouldn't be the same thing. Yeah, you're right. You're right, so this would be. To, to, the negative here would just be lon. Seven minus lon two. And it would be positive like that, so you'd be adding that, and so this would be adding lon. Uh, seven over two. Yeah, that's right. And then two fifths lon. Eight over thirteen times two over seven. Which is. Two o, two pi over five lon. Sixteen over. Seven times thirteen, I don't know what that is. Ninety-one, sixteen over ninety-one does not reduce, but. Just try. Does not. Uh, that doesn't seem right, that doesn't seem, I mean. Actually, no, you know, why wouldn't it be right? It's a, it's a weird. But definitely if um.
Maybe, okay. Like, I'm gonna be confused, so if it's lon seven. Minus lon two, wouldn't it be plus lon seven divided by two? Or am I wrong?
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right, yeah, yeah, I missed that, that, that negative sign shouldn't be there. You're right, so then this is seven over two, so then this is.
Fifty-six over twenty.
Yeah, six or twelve.
Over twelve?
Over twenty.
Thirteen times two?
Twenty-six.
Why? Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm. Yeah, 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 I was just reducing, so this would be. So this would be just a thirteen, and this would be a four times seven, whatever four times seven is, uh, four times seven is twenty-eight.
Uh, question, wasn't it two pi R times the entire integral that gave us the volume?
Yep, so. Not two pi R, careful, sorry, not two pi R, it's two pi times the integral. R is inside the integral. That's R, that's H. Since they're both functions of X, they have to be inside the integral.
Since they're both what?
Since they're both like a function of X, right? They have to be inside the integral, cause we're integrating with respect to X, but two pi is not a function of X, two pi is two pi.
Just to be clear, how did you decide that X was? The um radius and the DX was the.
For, for any, for any, choose some random black line here that I'm drawing, so this is, this is the cylindrical shells method, right? Choose some random vertical line here. What is that distance? What is its distance from the Y axis?
Axis, okay.
Right? It's, it's always just the X value. Just its X value. That's its distance.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the radius, and for, that's the same, that's true for any random vertical line you draw. And then the height again is, is by definition. This graph. Which is what they gave us.
Okay, thanks. Um, so can you please explain what happened to the X outside of the bracket?
Uh, went on top here. And then we fact, and then we factored out an X uh, in here, uh, so. Kind of a skip, skip this up here, so it's gonna be. X over X times X squared plus seven X plus six DX. And then these Xs cancel. And then we're here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Okay, any other questions about this one? Hopefully I got it right. I don't actually know if I got it right. Maybe the person who sent it to me could, could check the answer.
Wait, can you scroll down for a sec?
To which part?
I'm just lost in the lon part, like some. People were talking and I was just lost lon part.
This part here simplifying the lon's?
Yeah.
Yeah, so lon. A minus lon B is equal to lon. A over B. And lon. A plus lon B is equal to uh lon AB. In the lon. Alright, so I just use those rules here. This minus this is gonna be eight over thirteen, yeah, go for it.
Why did you rearrange it? Are we even allowed to do that? Like, you know how we got plus lon seven minus lon two? Minus lon two plus lon seven?
That would be the same thing, though. That would be, that's the same thing as this. That's the value, the number, like the, the number that this, the most of these lines represent. This line. Is equal to this line. Right, we didn't change anything, the number didn't change. I just applied the negative. So.
But like, when you're using the lon laws, then wouldn't it be like different?
No, it would, it's still say the same, you're allowed to do that, and, and it would say the same. Because think about it, I'm, if, if I, if I divided these, but if I divided these. And then divided it by this. Right, so you'd be flipping the fraction, right, right, you'd be flipping the fraction twice there. And so then you'd be okay.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Okay, so how does everybody feel about all this stuff?
I feel like we're getting closer and closer to a potential Horowitz question, and that makes me smile.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like.
This was a hard one. Well, I'm thinking we start doing discord to the, the weather ones, the uh, improper integrals, yes. Don't really know how much else.
That's one that I don't understand.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's that, although, let's just see the other one, so there, other people did send me questions. Think I'll do them maybe at the end.
I mean, you're going to eat, right?
I can go a little later, it's okay. Actually, today I can actually go.
Yeah, I do, and, oh, you can?
So. Yeah, other people sent me questions, although I don't think. Just by looking at them. They don't seem like they're. I could be wrong. But they don't seem like they are. Um, partial fraction decomposition questions, they look like they're trig sub questions, which is why I think I'll, I'll do them at the end though. So once we finish this, uh, this uh, partial fractions, which we actually are done, partial fractions now. And I'll do the uh, improper integrals now as well. Should we take a break, or I'm kind of okay to keep going, but what does everybody feel? Wanna take a ten minute break?
I'm good to keep going. Wh- what did four, what did four point, was three point seven, what did three point seven cover?
Three point seven is improper integral, so here I'll show you my. Show you my screen, uh, show you my note here, right, so that's, that's all this stuff. Alright, three point seven is improper integrals. So evaluating integrals with discontinuities. Evaluating integrals where the limits of integration are infinity or negative infinity.
Okay, okay.
And comparison theorem. Again, if you want this document, go to the, uh, sorry, go to the um, homework help chat, okay, go for it.
Uh, wait, this is um, like, uh, you, we talked about where like convergence and divergence, right?
Yes, that's right. Okay, so I think I'll just keep going, maybe I will take a break in a little bit, we'll see, like, when I feel like I need to take a break, but for now, I'm okay to keep going, so. Um, hopefully that's good with everybody. See how many people are here? Thirty-eight people, that's nice. Good, I'm happy to see people here, um, thank you for coming. So. Let's give it a try. Okay, so improper integrals, uh, as it says here, is an integral. That either has infinity or negative infinity as one of its limits of integration, or it's an integral. Where i- i- it has a discontinuity between its limits of integration. So this means that improper integrals are only definite integrals. There is no improper indefinite integral, that doesn't exist, because it's, the whole improper thing happens because of the limits. Right, so, okay, so what do we do if you have one of the uh, uh, limits of integration being infinity? Well, you kind of dodge the question, and you say, well, evaluate it at T. As a variable T and take. The limit as T goes to infinity of the antiderivative. Right, so for the bottom, you say T equals negative. The limit as T goes to infinity of the anti-derivative, right? So for the bottom, you say T equals negative infinity. For the top, you say T equals infinity. Uh, just assuming that it's uh continuous up to that point there, right? You're just assuming that's continuous up to that point. If it's not continuous, then you're gonna have to do a little something different, but uh this this whole line here, yeah, someone's gonna say something? No, oh, maybe that's just my my voice repeating? Yeah, I think that was I think that was just my voice repeating. Okay.
I was gonna do this in my.
Oh, okay, okay. So uh in general, if you want to evaluate something that's like from infinity to negative or negative infinity to infinity. Of F of X DX, right? Well, you choose some random point to split it at, right? So you say from negative infinity to some point and then from some point to infinity. From there and then uh and then that point can be anything, because if you think about it, right? That point can be anywhere. You could split it. You still have the whole real line there. Right? Uh, usually you choose zero unless there's a reason not to. Um, of course, if there's a discontinuity there, then you might want to do that, but. That's that's again, that's for discontinuities and you just split them up into just evaluated with T. Uh, and then just take the limit as T goes to negative infinity or uh T goes to infinity. Uh, one thing to notice here is I use two different variables. So if you have to do both, you use two different variables because they are different numbers. Mean different things, so yeah. Um. Okay, and so then there we go. Given all these limits exist, of course. So if the limit doesn't exist, right? So if you try to take a limit like this and the limit doesn't exist. Then you say that it's divergent, okay? Then you say the the limit is, well, the the integral is divergent um or it diverges, right? And so you wouldn't be able to put a number on it, right? Um, and then if it does dive, if it does exist and you do get a solution, then the integral is convergent or it converges and. That's good because you get the number answer. It's not good or bad. It's just like is the answer, I guess. Okay, and then if you have a discontinuity at C, let me see, yeah, that's what we're gonna be at after this. Um, if you have a discontinuity, so if you have an integral. Uh, of F of X DX from A to B. And somewhere between A and B, there's a discontinuity of F of X, right? So let's say one over X. Uh, and you're integrating from negative one to one. Well, you have a discontinuity at zero. Right? So what you need to do, and I maybe I'll draw this, right? So if you have one over X DX. Right? Which looks like that. Well, that's a really bad draw, really bad drawing of one over X DX. I put some put some things over here. And I hate when it zooms to the side like that. Okay. Okay, so if I have one over X DX, which looks like, no, make it green. One over X DX, which looks like that. And I want to evaluate the integral. I want to find the area under the curve from here to here. Right? Well, I can I can't just do that directly. Like, I could, but I would get, I guess what would happen if I did that? I don't really know what would happen, but you're not allowed to do that. That's an improper integral because you have a discontinuity in the middle of it, right? Uh, yeah, maybe it's interesting if we figure out what happens if you try. Um, I don't really know what would happen if you tried, but. Maybe it give me.
Wait, is it is it plausible that it would approach infinity because there would always be space? In between that, because it's an asymptote, right? At uh actually go zero? So what I like, I was I was just thinking about this right before you said it. I'm like, wait, one over X, it it like as it approaches, like it's a as it approaches. The X, Y axis asymptotically, so. And it like never becomes zero. So would that mean that the area under the curve is infinite?
Uh. Isn't it divergent? I thought we covered that in lectures. Yeah, yeah, I think it is divergent. We can try it, of course. We can we can give it a try. I'm just thinking, what would just happen if I was just doing this? And I just did lawn, oh, because, wait, no, hold on, but I can't.
I'm sorry, what's the original question?
Integral of one over X. DX, sorry, one one second here, one second lawn absolute. Oh, it'd be. Oh, I would just get zero. Oh, because it's an even function. I'm sorry, it's an odd function. Um. Yeah, of course I would get zero. Um, but. So the in so of course this area is zero because whatever this chunk is, this will be the same chunk. But they cancel out because it's it's net signed area, right? Whatever, again, whatever. This chunk is, which is what that left side would evaluate minus this or the way around, whatever, would be zero. Um, so, okay, well, let's just say, let's just say it was here. Let's just say I was evaluating from negative two. Negative negative two. To there, so then it would be lawn. So this is kind of like on the side work quickly, okay? So not not really explaining that well for this one. So the this anti-derivative is lawn absolute value X plus C. Well, actually, no plus C evaluated from negative two to one. So lawn one plus lawn two. Because lawn absolute value negative two is two. So this is just lawn two. So I did get a result. Although it I think it's just wrong. Uh, I think it just isn't, right? Because I didn't account for this discontinuity. Okay. This is definitely a side point because I'm just I'm just trying to ask the question. What I'm trying to do here is is ask, well, there we have a way and that's what this chapter tells us. Um, to deal with a function that has a discontinuity over between the bounds of integration, which in this case is zero. We have a discontinuity there. But what I was just trying to ask is, what happens if I just try to integrate like normal? What happens? I get an answer. Um, but I think that this just answer, this answer is just wrong. It just isn't the answer. Um. So to to actually get the answer, you have to do the method, which is in three point seven, which is what this is talking about here. And so to do that, well, you you pretty much make two integrals. You make the integral. That evaluates from, in this case, negative two to zero, right? Evaluates from this integral here. Right? Or maybe I'll I'll write it just in here. Integral from negative two to zero of the function one over X DX. The problem with this, though, is that you can't evaluate at zero. You can't evaluate the anti-derivative at zero. It's it's there's a discontinuity there, right? You can't say lawn. Oh, wait, no, lawn of zero does work. Lawn of zero is one. Okay, so never mind, you can't do that. Um, so actually, we have no problem in this case. You can just you just do this and then it'll work. And then in this case here, you'd say. Was it, sorry? Oh, yeah, lawn of zero is not one, okay. Yes, I did just say lawn of zero is one.
Dude, actually, it's check my calculator, it's like one.
Lawn of one is zero. I hope so.
Yes.
Lawn of one is zero, is what I meant to say.
Yeah, you're right there.
So i- in this case, yeah, so we'd have a problem here, but you take the limit, uh, but in this case it would be divergent. So maybe we'll do that here. So what what you do is you define two two separate functions. What I'm trying to explain is is you define two separate functions, right? One that approaches the discontinuity from the left side and one that approaches the discontinuity from the right side, right? These are two different.
Yeah.
Integles.
Wait, Adam, did you draw the graph for lawn X? I'm pretty sure you can't have a lawn of a negative number.
You can't have.
Like, it's only positive.
But remember, it's absolute value. The anti-derivative is absolute value, so.
Oh, that's just because of graph.
But yeah, so but are you saying like the the anti-derivative wouldn't be evaluated at? A negative number?
Yeah.
But so so if I try to evaluate. It would from negative three to three or negative three to four of lawn. Oh, sorry, of one over X DX. This is gonna be lawn absolute value X evaluated from negative three to four. Which is gonna be lawn four minus lawn.
Yeah, that would work. I thought the um the integral was lawn X. That's why then it wouldn't exist.
Oh, I see. Then, yeah, then you would.
That function wouldn't exist.
What is the integral of lawn X? Oh, X lawn X minus X. Okay, well, let's get into an example here. Let's get into an example here. Um, what's going on? So again, just the main idea that I'm trying to say from this part is. If you're evaluating a function that has a discontinuity somewhere in the bounds, you have to define two integrals. One that approaches it from the left, one that approaches it from the right, right? And that'll fill in the area. And if that limit exists, right? Take the limit as it approaches. If the limit exists on both sides, then it converges onto a number. Okay, that's the main idea of that. Uh, it definitely good better to explain with the examples, of course. So let's give it a try. See. Okay, uh, I will look at Horowitz's questions here, see if there's anything. But of course, someone, anyone can send me their improper integral questions and I will do them. Uh, the thing with this is that there's a lot of random limits that you just have to know. Um, okay, let's try this one here. So let's try this this one here. This is gonna be an example from lecture. Again, anyone can solve, uh, anyone can send me questions. I see some people sent me a question. One person sent me a question. Um, and I'll try that after this, but for now, let's just try it. Let's just do um. Improper integral questions. That's what I'm looking for. So this is the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X E to the X DX. So this is gonna have to separate, right? So what we do here is is we we separate this into two integrals. Uh, the integral from negative infinity to zero. Uh, of X E to the X DX plus the integral from zero to infinity of X E to the X DX. Okay, and so this is possible to solve, right? This is possible to solve. What we do is we apply a limit, right? We 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 put, we don't apply the limit, but we write it as a limit. So the limit as T goes to negative infinity. Right? Of T to zero, X E to the X DX plus the limit. As R goes to infinity of the integral from zero to R of X E to the X DX.
We have.
Yep, go for it.
Why couldn't we just do limit as T approaches infinity and then just do one and then negative TNT? Why do you have to have two?
Yeah, negative TNT. Um, we can try it. Uh, yeah, not don't separate it, negative TNT. We can try. I don't know, but maybe let's try that after and let's see if that works.
Okay.
But for now, let's do this way. This is the way that the teacher showed to do it. So I feel like that's a reason why that would work.
But can't you uh like you can approach negative and positive infinity at the same time? I think that's the thing about.
Oh, that's the that's true. Well.
Yeah.
I think actually the problem is is that negative one times infinity. Well, that is infi- that is negative infinity.
Yeah, like you you going all the way to that side and then you're just saying go back the other way.
Yeah.
No, I think it's 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 your approach in infinity from two different sides. That's why it's like. Negative from the right, positive from the left, something like that. So you can't do them at the same time, but you can still try.
I'll try it. Yeah, I mean, it should, we should get stuck at some point if it doesn't work, right? It shouldn't just let us like do the question. It, I say it as if it's like math is conscious, but no.
It it is conscious.
It is conscious, yeah.
It is.
So I'm gonna. Yeah, that's true. That's 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 the part of it. That's what I'm saying when I'm saying it. Um, so I'm going to integrate this as just an indefinite integral quickly. So X E to the X DX. So it's just gonna be a U sub question, U equals X DV, not a U sub, sorry, uh, integration by parts. E to the X DX, DU equals DX, V equals E to the X. So this integral. Is X E to the X minus the integral of E to the X DX, which is X E to the X minus E to the X plus. Okay, so I'm gonna do that now. So this is gonna be limit. Uh, yeah, you know, I won't be lazy. I'll write the whole thing. Limit as T goes to infinity, sorry, T goes to negative infinity. Of this integral, which is X E to the X minus E to the X evaluated from T to zero. Okay, plus the limit as R goes to infinity of, again. X E to the X minus E to the X evaluated from. Uh, zero to R, zero to R. Okay, so let's let's do that. I'm gonna just write a big L for the limit, but that's that limit. Uh, I think you can tell, but it's not gonna be confusing which limit is which. Um, so this is going to be evaluated zero, that's zero. This is zero minus one. So it's negative one minus this evaluated at T. T. E to the X, uh, sorry, TE to the T plus E to the T. Because it's plus because it's minus this. Plus another limit evaluated R, that's RE to the R minus E to the R. Minus evaluated at zero, so that's gonna be zero times negative one, so plus one. Okay, so now we need to take the limit as this goes to, you know, I shouldn't have written the whole thing. Limit as T goes to negative infinity. Limit as R goes to infinity. So to do that, well, okay, what's affected by the limit? The negative one and the one are not affected by the limit, right? So they in fact cancel. So now we have to go back, we have to go into the integral. So not into the expression. So limit, the limits distribute linearly across it, right? So you can say this is neg and the and the constant multiples come out. So this is the limit. As T goes to uh negative infinity of TE to the T plus, in fact. I will just do limits here like this. L um L E to the T plus L. RE to the R.
That mean negative, since you've factored a negative from the limit? That's what you did, right?
Where uh for here?
Yeah.
Uh, what I did is I just, so the nega- the negative one goes away. Negative one's not there anymore. Negative one combines with this one here and they cancel them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then this, this is the limit of negative TE to the T, but the negative can come out.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the limit of E to the T. And then again, limit here, limit here. Again, every time I write the L, I then realize that I shouldn't have written the L, but then. But then I just replaced all like these could have been Ls. I don't know, anyways. Um, so this is going to negative infinity. I I I'm sorry, I'm, it's always a bad idea to just do, I'll just write it. I'll stop being lazy. Limit as T goes to negative infinity, limit uh limit, ah, can't take care right, limit. As R goes to infinity, limit as R goes to infinity. Okay, so what's happening here? We have negative, this is infinity, E to the infinity. Okay, so this is a. About E to the infinity is infinity, so it's an infinity times infinity situation here. So we can use Laplace's rule for this. Just gonna check, check with the notes here quickly, but uh. Yes, we can. Let me just check here quickly. Yep. Although the second one. Okay, well, uh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you can do all these limits and you might get some result, but. This limit here minus the limit as R goes to infinity of E to the R. And actually also this limit, uh, these are both divergent, right? Divergent. And this is also divergent. The limit as, oh, sorry, this is this is not divergent, sorry. Is that what you're about to say?
Yeah, I was just about to say.
Yeah, that's not divergent. This is divergent. So since that's divergent, the whole thing's divergent, the answer's divergent.
Yeah, imagine getting a hard question like this tomorrow just to say, uh, shit, so divergent.
Well, it's.
I could just say from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, it's possible that they would make you, because like you still have to do a lot of work to get to this answer and then you have to show that you understand what divergent is, so.
Yeah, when I could just get sense of fifty fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you explain why it's divergent again?
Because this limit here, the limit, my pen's upside down, uh, the limit as R goes to infinity of E to the R. That's just infinity. Right? E to the X just keeps growing, but it doesn't go, it doesn't go back.
And then all the rest of them are like, uh, okay, well, the rest of them are a value.
It doesn't, it could be a value. This one, this one zero, uh, this one with Laplace's rule, you could you could find something probably and this one the same thing. Um.
Wait, isn't that one the same thing? Limit the E to the T, isn't that, how's that zero? Wouldn't it still be infinity like the last one? That's infinity?
Uh, this is going to negative infinity. This is going to negative.
Oh, yeah.
Negative infinity. So E E to the T, right, approaches zero. As it's an asymptote, it's zero, right? So that's the limit as goes negative infinity is uh uh zero.
Okay.
So this would be zero. These ones again could get you something, but it doesn't matter. This quantity here is infinity. So you're doing you doing something maybe plus zero, plus something maybe minus infinity. Well, you can't do that, so divergent. And that's pretty much it.
How'd you get the negative one and the positive one and the line above the last one?
Uh, evaluated at zero. So the 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 anti-derivative evaluated at zero. So it's gonna be, this is gonna cancel out. Minus E to the zero is minus one, so that went there. Right? And then minus evaluated at T.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Wait, if what evaluated at T, I got the negative one, right, the E to the zero equal one, then times negative one, but then what did you say on the right hand side?
What is? What is this asking you to do? This 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 line right here, what is that asking you to do? It's asking you to evaluate at zero, value this whole thing at zero, which ended up being negative one, and then subtract that from this whole thing evaluated at T.
Yeah.
And that's what I did? I I I just, I distributed the the. Does that make sense? Same thing here.
Is, is RE to the R also divergent?
Um I'm not sure, we can try it with Laplace's rule if you want. Yep, we can try it.
E to the R is divergent, so. Doesn't that mean that RE to the R would also?
Well, it's 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 infinity. It's infinity times, yeah, hold on, one second, it doesn't make sense.
You could.
Oh yeah, it's it it is, it's infinity times infinity, which is a Laplace's rule situation, that's in, I think that's indeterminate, isn't it?
I don't know.
Yeah, that that's that, I'm pretty sure that's indeterminate, so you can, you can use Laplace's rule, so you could say, this is the limit. As so, let's just try to figure out this limit here, this is RE to the R, right, as R goes to infinity, well, I can rewrite this as big L. E to the R over R to the negative one, or actually, no, no, you know what, I'll write it as RE to the negative R. Right, I can apply Laplace's rule now, right, and so it's gonna be one over E to the negative R. Negative that. Okay, and then this is going to be, well, the limit as R goes to infinity. Negative R is gonna be one over zero, so does not exist.
Wait, would it be, oh, it was negative infinity, okay.
Right, so this is as N approaches negative, so it should be, should be a limit here still. Um so this is going to zero, so it'll be, it would be negative one over zero, which does not exist.
And that occurs as a negative infinity, right, cause you're gonna go E to the negative R, which R is infinity.
That's how I get zero here.
Yeah, alright.
So it does not exist, I hope I did that right, that'd be kind of, yeah, I hope I did that right. So yeah, you wouldn't get a solution, same thing, well, not necessarily the same thing here. Yeah, this is still a Laplace's rule situation, cause it's, this it's infinity times zero, uh which is. I I actually forget all the indeterminate forms, I think that's an indeterminate form.
Would the E to the R go up?
I think so.
Sorry, say it again, what was?
The E to the R, R negative R, it's just E to the R. One over E negative R, which is E to the R.
One over E to the negative R is E to the R, that's the same thing.
Oh, it's on after Laplace's rule.
Oh, here, this one? That's a R here, yeah, and then. And then this would go to zero, because I'm applying the limit as it goes to infinity, so E to the negative infinity is zero.
Wouldn't that just be E to the infinity?
No, it would be E to, because R is infinity. E to the infinity doesn't exist, period, it's it's infinity.
Oh no, but it's negative, so you.
It's negative, so it's E to the negative infinity, right, that's what we're going to, E to the negative infinity, and then that would be just zero, one over zero is.
Uh I mean, one to the E to the negative infinity would be just E to the infinity.
Can you say it again, what was it?
Uh, cause one to the negative infinity, which is the, sorry, uh one over E to the negative infinity, which is the E to infinity.
One over E to the negative infinity would be one over zero.
Wouldn't it just be E to infinity? This is negative infinity?
Uh yeah, okay, that would be E, E to the infinity, I guess, which would just be infinity. But we're doing stuff that doesn't, that doesn't really work here, you can't say that that's equal, right, because, yeah, you're you're right, this is equal to. Um before I apply the limit, this is equal to uh uh E to the infinity. Right, and this is uh one over zero equals infinity, but again, this. This doesn't work, you can't, do you use infinity like that? You have to be careful with how you use infinity. Um there's, there's not very good, like, we don't have good rules on how to use infinity as a number, so um. That's why limits are weird, because there's kind of weird rules around it, but.
Quick side note, act uh infinity times infinity isn't a Lapitall room, a Lapitall form, it's uh infinity minus infinity.
Oh, so infinity times infinity is not a uh indeterminate.
It it's zero minus infinity, I still zero multiplied by infinity, but uh infinity times infinity isn't one.
It's just infinity, I guess?
I guess, but like, the thing is, we 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 say zero times infinity isn't, is indeterminate, so I would think that would just be zero. So, I don't know, it's weird that like our normal conceptions of zero and like ones.
Yeah.
Hey, by, by the way, um is this the the nitro? Because like, man, it's so glitched out, like. I don't know if that's me.
This, is something wrong with the screen, like my my stream?
Yeah.
Kind of pixelated, but it's, it's easy to, like it.
It's easy to follow.
High resolution and low resolution at different points, usually when you're good.
Uh when, when you're doing problems, like it's still there, but I can see, but like, I remember a couple of weeks ago, you're like, was it worth it? I'm just like, trying to evaluate that right now.
I'm not sure, I I Discord has been telling me I have connection issues this week, I don't know why, I have, nothing's changed in my connect and like regarding my connection.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't really know.
Okay.
Um.
Maybe it's that then.
Yeah, it could be that, it could be that, sure, I I really don't.
Yeah, in the top, in the top right corner of my screen, it says the stream you're viewing currently has reduced video or audio quality, this may be due to network.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's all that construction you've been doing, Adam.
Might be all the construction, maybe someone.
We got that construction, yes, that turns something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm really not sure, I'm not sure, hopefully, I'll I'll I guess I'll look at, I'll try to look into that this week sometime, I'll figure that out. Um, okay, let me. Sorry, give me just one second here, I'm looking at my phone. Give me just one minute, guys.
Yeah, are we gonna go past here?
Yep, I can go past eight, I'm okay going past eight. So um.
By the way, infinity times infinity is a Lapitall form.
It is?
Somebody was saying that, right, I was just letting them know.
The rules diverge from each other.
You just have to change it into something else.
Laplace's rule.
Yeah, I clicked the first link too, yeah.
That's always the best, your best bet, uh there, so infinity.
No, but if you have infinity times infinity, then you can change it to like. Zero, in, zero over zero or infinity over infinity, like you can change it.
Ha- how?
Go scroll down, you'll see. There's literally the same example that we just did.
Limit as. Where, hold on, where am I?
It's example three.
Example three, limited X goes to negative infinity of E, oh yeah, that's true. So this is. It's in the form infinity times zero, so this one can, you can apply to Laplace's, this is for our negative infinity one. Yeah, this is for our negative, so this one is good, it. It doesn't actually, it still doesn't say infinity times infinity, is it, is it indeterminate, actually? This is, this is an infinity times zero case. That they're doing, infinity times zero.
Oh.
Well, let's just, let's just look up the question, is infinity times infinity indeterminate form?
Yeah, I think it only works for infinity.
Dude, we have to get this specific.
No.
Does anyone have CPs from last, last semester, I think he was here?
Yeah, it seems like it's not, no one, none of the places mentioned it, so I'm gonna say it's not. It's not an indeterminate form.
Hey.
Okay, um, let's, let's move on, let's try to, let's try another question here, uh I have another one that's pretty good. Yeah, okay, let's do this one, so this is the integral, this is an example from lecture. So the integral from zero to E of X ln X DX. Okay, X ln X DX, so we have a problem here, because you can't evaluate this. Uh you you have a discontinuity at zero, right? ln of zero is negative infinity, so not one, like I said before, so it's going to be uh discontinuous there. So we have to do something, we have to turn this into the limit. As T approaches zero from above of uh T to E. Integral X ln X DX.
Can you explain that again?
So I'm, I'm pretty much, here, I I'll draw the graph, X ln X would look like. I can't even pretend to know what X ln X would look like, still have a discontinuity there, and then it would just be up more, and let's just look at what X ln X looks like. X on X, so it looks like this, right, and so we're trying to integrate, find the area under the curve from zero to infinity. Or yeah, no, sorry, zero to E, which is here, something like right here, right, so this area under this curve here, I'll say, I'll say Y equals E. Oh, sorry, X equals E, X equals E, so we're trying to find this area under the curve. Like that, between the green and the blue line here, so we can't evaluate the anti-derivative at zero though. So what we need to do is evaluate it at T and take the limit as T, so X equals T. Oh no, I don't mean to do that, uh but can I set, hold on. T equals one, X equals T, there we go. So I'm evaluating this anti-derivative, I gotta take the limit as T goes to zero, but from the positive side, right? So we, imagine this is sort of like a thing here, let's see, can I, hold on, I'll see if I can do something here quickly, um.
Yeah, I can't really see, but that's natural log of X, right, the graph.
Uh X ln X, that's X ln X.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, one second, I know that looks bad, uh E, yeah, there you go, so I'm defining, oh no, hold on.
That is E two point seven.
Yeah, yeah, so pretty much I'm defining it uh, an area function, although this is actually bad, because you're not finding that whole area, you're just finding the area between the curve and the X axis, right? But I gotta take the limit as that goes to zero, right, that's what I'm doing, and this is a bad demonstration, ignore this whole red part that goes up and whole red part goes down. You only wanna talk about this triangle shaped thing and this little curve shaped thing here, right? And so you take the limit as that goes to zero from the positive side, right, we're going from the positive side, we'll limit as that goes to zero.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
So. Um so again, limit as that goes to zero from the positive side uh of X ln X, okay, so let's integrate X ln X first. So it's gonna be a integration by parts, so uh DV, sorry, DV equals ln X. Although actually, no, I'll make D, U equal ln X and DV equal X. No, sorry, that's a bad idea, I don't know why I did that, because this will be one over X, yeah, yeah, this will work, actually. U uh DU equals one over X DX, D, uh sorry, V equals one half X squared. So this is. One half X squared ln X minus the integral of. Um one half X DX. So one half X squared ln X minus one half, one half X squared. Plus C, so one over four. I did that fast because that's just an integration by parts, but if you have any questions, just let me know. So now we're gonna take this anti-derivative and evaluate it at T to E, right, so we're gonna take this, uh we're gonna take the limit. As T approaches zero from the top of one half X squared ln X minus. One quarter X squared evaluated from T to E, so first, let's evaluate it at E. So this is going to be, again, the limit as T approaches zero from the top, is going to be. One half E squared, so E squared over two, ln E is one, minus one quarter E squared. Okay, that's fine, minus one half T squared ln T. Uh that's fine, minus one quarter T squared, close brackets. This is the limit as T approaches zero from the top of um. One quarter E squared, so E squared over four, uh that should be right, yeah. E squared over four minus one half T squared. ln T plus one quarter T squared. It's fine. Is this gonna be divergent? No, it shouldn't be. Hmm, hold on, did I make a mistake? Let's just see, let's go check if this, it's right up to here. One half X squared ln X minus a quarter X squared evaluated from TD, no, that's right, evaluated at T. They evaluated at E, that's E squared minus E before minus one half T squared on T plus, uh that's fine. Factor out a quarter, oh, that'll be two. I'm kind of confused about something, but that, that's okay, let's just keep going, so this is going to be, um now I gotta take the limit, right? So E squared, E squared over four, that's just gonna come out, cause that's not affected by this limit. Okay, and then what's gonna be left inside is, is gonna be the limit. As T goes to zero from the top of negative a half T squared ln T. Plus one quarter T squared plus E squared over four, so again, E squared over four is just a constant that goes in. Okay, I will, um, what will I do? Um, I can distribute, he did it a little differently here, that's why I'm kind of confused. Okay, that's fine, let's factor out a quarter, let's factor out one quarter, so one quarter limit. Of this will be negative two T squared ln T plus T squared, plus E squared over four. Check if that's right, T squared two, two on T. Then, yeah, that's it, that's alright, that's good, and then. Um, what I can do from here is, okay, factor out a T squared, right, and also factor out. A negative sign, right, and I'll move that to the front, so it's gonna be negative one over four. Limit, in fact, I'll I'll actually do this in two different steps, so it's gonna be, I I just factored the negative sign right now, so it's gonna be negative. T squared ln T minus T squared, just did that one step there, just to make it perfectly clear what I'm doing. And then this is gonna be negative a quarter times the limit of, I'm gonna factor out a T squared, two T squared. T squared times two ln T minus one, plus E squared over four. Okay, the reason I do it like this is because that's how it's done in the lecture, but also because. Uh we can apply the limit differently now, right, so if I, if I were to just apply this limit, again, this is limit as T approaches zero from that side. Right, so this is going to be zero times two times infinity minus one. Right, which is just, we could distribute the zero, and you have zero times infinity. Right, so that's a, that's an indeterminate form, zero times infinity, right, so I can apply Laplace's rule to this. So this is gonna be negative one over four, limit as, okay, uh what, limit as. T goes to zero from the right of two ln T minus one over T to the negative two. Plus E squared over four, okay, apply Laplace's rule here. Negative one over four, limit as T goes to zero from the side, from the, from the top. Okay, derivative of this is two over T, okay, two over T. Uh in fact, I can just take that, yeah, I can, I can just take the two out, so it's one half. Okay, take the two out there, um so this is one over T over, the derivative is negative two T to the negative three. Okay. Plus E squared over four. Then I can write this as negative a half, limit T goes to zero from that side, this is. Uh so this is T to the negative one, so negative one. This negative two can also factor out. I don't see why not. Yeah, the negative two can also factor out, so it's gonna be positive one over four. And this is negative one plus three, so negative one minus minus three, so negative one plus three is T squared. Plus E squared over four, and now this is, well, this is just zero. Plus E squared over four, so our answer is E squared over four. Plus E squared over four, so our answer is E squared over four. And that's the answer. So how did everybody feel about that?
Yeah, just run through it again.
Yes, I will, I'll.
It was a beautiful question, whoever said it was ugly, shame you, Ethan, I think.
Did someone say it was an ugly question? So. So, yeah, honestly, it's it's just that limits are weird, like, I feel like we didn't properly learn. How to deal with this, right, limits are just weird, it feels like most of the time I'm doing limits, it's just like, well, it's like, makes sense, but I don't like. I don't know, like, I don't know, that's not very articulate about limits for some reason, but just the feeling I have about it, so.
But not as much trying to do yourself.
Would you say, sorry?
Uh I I think what you're trying to say is, um, it makes sense looking at the answer, but not as much when you're trying to do it yourself.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to when I'm trying to do it myself, as, yeah, definitely not as much as looking at the answer. So, okay, I'll go through it here quickly, so we're evaluating this limit, zero to E of X lon X DX. We have a discontinuity at zero, so we have to take the limit as T approaches zero from the right, which is what I explained on Desmos. So first they did the indefinite integral, which ended up being one half X squared lon X minus one quarter X squared plus C. I evaluated that from T to E, T, we're taking the limit as T goes to zero. So evaluated it first, okay, so did the evaluation, this minus this, okay, this first bit turns into E squared over four. And the second bit turns into negative a half T squared lon T plus one over four, T squared, that didn't change, actually. So I can move that E squared over four to outside, because it's not affected by the limit at all, so now I just have everything in here. So I factor out a quarter, factor out a quarter, because uh that'll get rid of all the denominators here. And then I factor out a negative sign, so it's positive in there, although of course, that's negative now. Then I factor out T squared, but that doesn't leave the limit, because it's still affected by the limit, so it has to stay in. And now I have something that's in the form infinity, uh sorry, zero times infinity. Zero times negative infinity, still, zero times infinity, so this is where I can use L'Hopital's rule, in particular, I can use it. Um by writing this as. I was not able to move, uh that was a mistake, I was not able to move, actually, it doesn't actually matter. Anyways, whatever, um, so Lo- L'Hopital's rule, it's in the form now, it's something over something, so. Take the derivative of the top and the bottom, so derivative of the top is just T to the negative one, uh this fraction is still one over four. Although it doesn't matter, goes to zero after, but the the that fraction should still be one over four, um and this should be one over eight. Um so then, the derivative of the top is T to the negative one, derivative of the bottom is negative two T to the negative three. I'm allowed to move that negative a half out, so that's why it goes there, becomes an eight. And then T to the negative one divided by T to the negative three is just T squared. The limit as T goes to zero from the right of T squared, that's just zero, so it's one eighth times zero. Always plus this E squared over four, so it's E squared over four.
Shouldn't it be two T to the negative one?
Two T to the negative uh here, on the bottom?
Uh, no, no, on the top, on the top, to, because the derivative of two lon T would be uh two over X, uh two over T, right?
Yeah, and then I, and then I factored out the T and yeah, I didn't do that right, hold on, then this should be, this should be a half. Oh, you know, you know what, you know what?
No, you did it, you just factored it at two, and then you factored it uh a half again, so.
Yeah, I know, there there should be a two here, you're right, you're right, there should be. Again, it 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 doesn't matter, because it gets multiplied by zero at the end, so it doesn't matter, you're right, this, there should be a two on the top. So then this should be a quarter still, this should be a quarter still, the twos would just cancel, the negative two would, the negative would come out, yeah, that that's right. It was right before, but I made a different mistake up here, that was the problem.
Uh, does anybody have a question that's like, uh, it's an improper integral, but it's gonna require like a. A separable thing, so, because I think that's some some kind of combination that we'll get, like. It's an infinity question, but it's gonna have the fractions, does anybody have any questions like that?
You mean like, okay, so the one of the limits is our our infinity, but it's also a partial.
Yeah, it's also a partial question, uh, yeah, yeah, because that's like, I've been noticing the trend. It's like a combination, so does anybody have questions like that, or would we have to like go and search?
No, that would, that would be good, that would be good, I have one that's a trig substitution question.
I don't know, but yeah, sure, try it, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be some combination of, like, because like last week.
You're right, I that probably is what it's gonna be, it's prob- I I'd say, yeah, that makes sense, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a. Partial fraction decomposition question that has. A one, a discontinuity or a limit at infinity. So yeah, if anyone can find them, that would be good. Let me just see quickly, is there any other?
Yeah, it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter, right, because the the partial, the there. Apply the improper integral part of the question at the very end, and you apply the uh the. Partial fractions at the very end, right, like it doesn't really, yeah.
No, 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 it doesn't, no, as long, it it wouldn't change the process, it would just be a long process.
Right, okay.
Um, so yeah, the the ideas are all the same.
Wait, what, are you still talking about this last question?
No, no, the, no, no, if there was like a question that was like with partial fractions and a discontinuity or an improper integral, then. It would be, it wouldn't be any different, it would just be a long question.
Yeah, it's just like, just so that people can experience like what to go, I don't know.
Okay, we do technically have comparison theorem, but they're not gonna test us on comparison theorem. So I could do that.
What is comparison theorem?
It's just a way to. Yeah, that's true, they do. So comparison theorem is a theorem that states, it's kind of like squeeze theorem. Right, so if you know something about another function, in squeeze theorem is you know something about two other functions, but. A comparison theorem is you just know something about another function, and then you know something about the other function, you're comparing them. So for example, uh I I if I have this function and I have this function, right, call the top one F of X. Should I call the top one F of X, no, call the top one G of X. Call the top one G of X, call the bottom one F of X, right, in fact, actually, I'll uh, I'll put. The actual definition of it on screen, and then we'll we'll follow with the example. So of course, this doesn't make all that much sense just looking at it.
No, I'm pretty sure it's not, I don't think we should start that, because I'm pretty sure it's just on these two sections, but, alright.
Yeah, well, uh, just explaining.
Covered in this session, wasn't it?
This session?
No, no, not this session, this section, sorry, like this this could be on the mini test.
It could be, comparison theorem is part of three point seven.
Are you recording this, because I think I'm gonna have to go?
Yeah, I am recording, I am recording, yeah. So this will be posted, this will be posted after. So, yeah, comparison theorem. What page is this on?
Yeah, it's just kinda hard to, har- hard to see it.
Oh, it's hard to see, really, okay, well, this is just from my notes, so maybe go, you can go to homework help, and it's there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, thank.
Um, yeah, I'm surprised, is it really, is it blurry, is the screen blurry?
A little bit, yeah.
Is this gonna be on the test tomorrow?
It it's, it's in three point seven, so the test tomorrow is about three point seven, so.
Oh, shoot, did Horowitz talk about that?
About comparison theorem?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is part of the lecture, this is part of the lecture. Okay, I think Fake Sheep has their mic on and is doing a bunch of computer sounds, so, could you mute your mic?
Alright, I'll see you guys.
Okay, see you, shall I see you? Fake Sheep, Fake Sheep, calling out to you, mute your microphone. You're still not me in the microphone, but that's okay, sounds have stopped.
Did you say anything at the end, did you say something right before that?
Right before what, no, I said bye to you, that's that's. Um, okay, I'll just keep going, but if someone could somehow get Fake Sheep's attention to mute their mic, because they're making noise, um.
There's a guy tutoring. Discord Live, one of the students.
I don't think he realized this is my, because I'm.
He also probably doesn't hear me, so, it'll be good if some, if there's, nobody can mute him in this chat. Okay, I can manually mute him just like from my side, so everybody can just do that, just right click him and mute him. He's muted now, so if he's trying to get my attention, someone tell me. Um, then, okay, so comparison theorem is pretty much saying this, so if we have. This happening, right, G of X is always over F of X, so this is something that's happening for, after this point, let's call this A. Right, from A onwards, G of X is always bigger than F of X, and let's just say this is the, this is the X axis, they're appro- let's say they're approaching the X axis. That's a terrible X axis. And in fact, I'll just do it with a. So they're approaching the X axis, both of them, let's let's say it's an asymptote, approaching the X axis, and again, G of X is always on top of F of X, well. If we know, if we know that, um, if we know that F of X diverges. Right, if we know that F of X diverges, as in it doesn't have a finite area under there, right, it's an infinite area under there. Then G of X will also have an infinite area, it'll also diverge, which makes sense, right, if you're if you're if you're saying, it makes sense to me. If if this doesn't have a finite number that you can, you know, put it on, like you can say that that's five or what or whatever, right? Then the, something bigger than it definitely won't either, right, it'll be infinity plus something, which is still infinity, so it'll be, both of them will be infinity. But if G of X converges onto some number, right, converges onto five, let's say, the area under the curve from. G of X to infinity, sorry, let's just be clear, I'm taking the integral to infinity here, um from A to infinity. Right, so if that converges on some number L, then F of X will also converge, and it'll converge on something less than L. And that's it.
In what, in what situation, though, is that going to be like? Use, because wouldn't we be able to figure out what F of X's uh integral would be, if that's the case?
Well, it would be useful if F of X is really complicated to integrate, and all you wanna know is if it converges or diverges.
Right.
That then it would be useful.
Sounds like something screwy that they could ask us.
Uh yeah, it does, uh again, I I I don't think comparison theorem will be on the test tomorrow, but it is a possibility, so this is it here. This is what it is, right, but yeah, so if if you have a function that's too complicated to integrate, or just overly comp- uh complicated, right? And, but you know it's always underneath some G of X, right, it's always below some G of X, then you can, you can uh. Just, you can just determine if this converges or not, uh by just determining if if G of X converges or not. Right, or actually the other way around, too, if you have a G of X that's overly complicated, and you want, and you see an F of X, right? And that's less complicated, that's always under, then you can check if this converges or diverges, if this diverges, then this also diverges. But if this converges, then maybe this converges, you don't actually have, you don't actually know any information about that one, if it converges. But if this diverges, then this diverges.
Wait, does it only work for rational functions?
I don't, no, no, I don't think so. Maybe, but as far as I know, part of the definition is not that, so. Okay, should I do a question with it, or should I not waste my time?
Uh, if you have a question that would like, uh do you have anything that we could apply, um, the other sections with this?
Okay, yeah, okay, we can, we, I can use this, I mean. Zeroed, yeah, yeah, okay, that that, I I do have something, I do have something, so this is. It's from Horowitz's lecture, so show that, all we need to know is show that. Uh the integral from one to infinity of one over X E to the X. Uh DX converges. Right, oh no, actually, this won't have any getting from the other parts, this won't have anything weird happening, because T goes to infinity. Well, it'll it'll have a limit, like, we have to take a limit, so, so first of all, I only have one function here. This is either my G of X or F of X, right, now, I wanna know if this converges. So the only way to figure out if F of X converges is to find a a function G of X that's always above it. Right, that's always above it, um and then to. Then to figure out if that bigger function converges, then the lower function will also converge. So, well, we can look right away here and say that, eh, okay, um, hold on, does that make sense, wait?
You just subtract from the denominator, subtract X from the denominator?
Like factor it out, or?
Like you just take it out, I guess, or you could just do.
And what would that get us?
I guess, no, that would, uh, or sorry, um, do X over X E to the X, uh and then that would just be one over E to the X, that work?
X over, sorry, X over.
X E to the X, right, because we know that X is always going to be positive, so it's always gonna increase the value of the function.
Oh, and to me, do you mean to get a bigger function, to get a bigger function, yeah, 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 um and use that instead. That seems to work, although also I think just, just two over X E to the X would also work. I think.
But then that doesn't help the fact, because like, we could also just like, show that it converges by doing, right?
Yeah, that's true, okay, so let me show you, let me just do what what Horowitz did, okay, how about that? Do what Horowitz did, um, so. Here we have what he writes, and this doesn't, somehow, for some reason, makes sense to me, for, let me see. Okay, X is less than E to the X. That's, how is that true, wait a second, X is less than E to the X.
For all, like, one through infinity, that's always, right, because E to the one is two point seven, whatever.
It's two point seven and then E, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, that's true, so for X greater than, or equal to one, no, no, or.
Yeah, that's what I meant, Delphine always just subtracted X from the denominator. And she's like, that's bigger, so we can just use one over EX instead.
Oh, okay, that's gonna be bigger, because you're dividing by less, okay, I see. Okay, let's, let's, how about let's do both, let's try this, because I have the written part of this, but then let's also try that after, yeah, so, we just start, okay. That's honestly better, that is honestly better, to do it like that, you know what, let's just do it like that, actually, yeah, let's just do it like that. What's a function that's bigger than this, well, a function that's bigger than this is E to the, one over E to the X, is always bigger than this, right? So what we have to see is, does this, does this um converge? Right, the integral from one to infinity of one over E to the X, which is just E to the negative X. Well, this, this is just equal to, um, negative E to the negative X. Evaluated from one to infinity, and yes, I should be doing limits here, but I'm kind of skipping the limit part, not skipping the limit part, but just not writing limit. So evaluated at infinity, this is negative E to the negative infinity minus. Negative E to the negative one, which is plus E to the negative one, well, this is zero. Plus one over E, well, all that means is it converges. Right, it converges, so since this converges, which is a function that's bigger than this always. Then this must also converge, at some number less than one over E. Right, therefore, so if this was our G of X, show that F of X equals that. Therefore, F of X converges. By the, by the comparison theorem. So, the the only thing that I kind of halfed in this question is I I didn't write it with limits, but I just sort of, I just used infinity as a number. Which is effectively, in this case, the same thing, but not the same, not like, not the same, um, usually, but just worked here. So, is that okay, comparison theorem, possibly on the test, I'd say probably not. But, again, possibly on the test. Okay, so I can now, I can do some more questions, I think that's everything from, that's all the content. We did one with a discontinuity, we did one with a, we technically didn't do one with the discontinuity on both sides. We only did, yeah, we only did two questions like this. So maybe I can do more from three point seven. Yeah, maybe I'll find one more question that has a discontinuity here, so what about this one, I'll do one more question from three point seven, and then. I think I can do more after, but I'll do the chat like, chat questions after that, so, integral from negative one to one of one over. X cubed DX, that's what we're doing now.
Okay, dumb question. Can we just say that that's an odd function and therefore the?
That's, I thought, yeah. I think if you, if you evaluated it, it would be zero, but I think that that rule doesn't work. If you have a discontinuity, the whole point is that since you have a discontinuity, there's a chance that it's divergent. Right, so if you know for a fact that this was continuous, right, that this was continuous, from negative one to one and an odd function. Then you wouldn't have to worry about it, right, you could just say it's zero, but I think since there's a discontinuity, that. There's a chance that it's divergent. So, let's see, there's a discontinuity at zero, of course, um, so we're gonna have to rewrite this as two limits. The limit as T approaches zero from the underside of negative one to T. Of one over, and in fact, I'll just write it as X to the negative three DX, plus, uh, the limit. As R goes to zero from the top of R to one, uh, X to the negative three DX. Okay, so this is just going to be the limit as T approaches zero, oops, approaches zero from the. Underside of, uh, this anti-derivative is add one to the exponent, mu- uh, divide by the new exponent. Like that, evaluated from negative one to T, plus, the limit. As R approaches zero from the top of, uh, add one to the exponent, divide by the new exponent. Evaluated from R to one, so now I'm gonna write on the side a little bit here, so this is the limit. As T approaches zero from the underside of. I can move the negative a half out. Negative a half out, uh, this is gonna just be, uh, T to the negative two. Yep, and then this is just going to be, again, just, I just took the negative a half out, so this is just going to be evaluated at negative one, it's gonna be minus. Negative one to the negative two. Which is one over one, which is one. Right, negative one to the negative two is one over negative, negative one squared, which is, yeah, okay, that's good. Plus the limit as R approaches zero from the right of, actually, negative a half, the limit as R approaches. Zero from the right of evaluated at one, again, that's one minus R to the negative two. Okay, and now, the one and the negative one, they leave, they cancel each other out, so now we just have negative a half. Times the limit, right, as R, I'm sorry, as T approaches zero from the right of one over T squared. Right, uh, minus a half, times the limit as R approaches zero from the right of, well, the minus. Minus comes out, really, so it's plus that. Of one over R squared, right, and this is just going to be. So this would be infinity plus infinity. No, sorry, negative infinity plus infinity, which is, seems like it's gonna be zero, but it's divergent, because you have infinities there, so it doesn't work like that. So the answer is divergent, you see, so, it looks like it's gonna be zero, right, because again, it's an odd function evaluated from negative A to A. Right, but it's actually quantities of infinity that you're cancelling, which just means it's divergent.
I call bullshit.
All right, yeah, don't believe the math?
I had a question from three point four.
Yeah, the one you sent me here, yeah, 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 I I saw that, I'm just gonna do it after we finish three point seven.
Yeah, they got it, that's fine.
So, someone did just send me a three point seven question, a comparison theorem question, so maybe let's do that, although I don't wanna spend too much time on it, cause again, I don't feel like it's gonna be on the test. Um, let's take a look here. Yeah, I'll, I'll try this comparison theorem question, but again, i- if I'm spending too much time on it, I think I'll just move on, because. Um, there's no reason to, oh, what's my computer doing, oh boy, what's happening? Okay. There we go, so, here's this, comparison theorem, so. Well, since it says comparison theorem, we know we have to, uh, just. Pretty much compare this to another thing. Although, we need a definite answer. No, it's probably gonna be, it's probably gonna be divergent, so we find something bigger than it, so I'm assuming this is gonna be divergent. I'm assuming that's gonna be the answer, um, because why else would they give us a comparison theorem question with something that seems to give a definite answer? If we could just evaluate this, to get a definite answer, we would, so I'm gonna just assume that this is divergent. And so, we need a function that's bigger than this, always, and we wanna check if that is. No, we wanna, we wanna function that's smaller than it, always, and check if that's divergent. And if it is divergent, then this will be divergent. So what's smaller than this, always?
Wait, isn't it supposed to be bigger?
Well, so, what I'm checking here is that's, that's G of X, and that's F of X. Right, so both of these, right, that's F of X here, so, again, I'm, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that this is gonna be divergent. So one of the parts of comparison theorem, there's two parts, right, so the, the second part, really. Uh, or no, the first part, the first part of comparison theorem, it says that, if this function is divergent, this will also be divergent. So I'm saying this is my integral, da da da, from E one over lon X DX. Because I wanna find some function F of X, show that it's divergent, which means this is also divergent, without having to actually do this.
Yeah, like, F of X is supposed to be greater than the function we have.
Well, no, no, it's smaller, it's gonna be smaller in this case, because that's what I'm looking for, I want F of X to be smaller than G of X. Because that's how it works, like, that's how the theorem works, the smaller function, if the smaller function is divergent, then the bigger function is also divergent.
Well, hmm, that's not in my notes, my note says if G of X, sorry, if F of X is greater than G of X. Then, uh, it obeys whatever F of X does.
Yeah, yeah, well, we just have it written differently, for me, it's, F, G of X is the bigger function, and F of X is the smaller function. See, that's the, if, if F of X is between zero and G of X, so G of X is the bigger function in this case.
In your note, F of X is the function we have.
Well, I'm saying it's, I'm saying it's G of X, I'm choosing it to be G of X.
Yeah, then, then F of X has to be greater.
But the theorem is for.
That's only for convergence. We're trying to prove it's divergent, so we need to find something that's smaller and is also diver, cause that's what the theorem states.
Yeah, so if, what the theorem states is that if we have this situation, right, if we have this situation, F of X is always smaller than G of X. Right, then if this is divergent, then this will also be divergent. So I'm, what I'm doing is I'm choosing. Okay, yeah, don't worry, don't worry, I'm choosing this to be my lon, one over lon X, because then I, if I find some function that's always smaller than it. Show that it's divergent, right, dive, I wanna say dive, then this will also be divergent, without having to do the integral.
But what if, uh, like, wh- what if they ask us if it's convergent or divergent, is that when we get the bigger one?
Uh, yeah, well, if you, if you wanna show that something's convergent, then you need to find a bigger function that's convergent. A function that's always bigger than it and convergent.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Because then that shows that the smaller one is convergent and converges to a number that's smaller than whatever the top one converged to.
Okay.
So could we do one over X as our, um, comparison theorem?
Well, let's see, is one over, is one over X always less than, less than, it can be less than or equal to, actually, less than or equal to. Um, one over lon X, um, I don't know, let's see, is X less than or equal to. Lon X, do I have to flip the inequality when I do that? I think I have to flip the inequality when I do that, is X always bigger than lon X?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah, well, I mean, logically, right, cause E is greater than lon E.
Uh, yeah, okay, that makes sense, E, E to the X is da da da, X. Yes, so E to, E to the both sides.
Yeah, exactly.
And then that, that is true, this is true, so yes, this, this is true as well, so I can use that, the integral from E to infinity of one over X. DX is just, um, again, I'm gonna do it without taking a limit, I'm just gonna use infinity as a number, and should work. Uh, lon absolute value X, um, evaluated from E to infinity. So this is lon absolute value E minus lon absolute value infinity, um, which is. Uh, lon absolute value E is one.
Other way around?
Yes, it is. Lon infinity minus lon E, so it's in, well, lon infinity, what would that be, lon of infinity. Hmm, that's infinity, minus one, so divergent. Okay, since that's divergent, right, since F of X is divergent, G of X is divergent, this equals divergent.
How did you know it was divergent before you didn't?
Uh, how did I know which one was divergent, this, this here?
Hmm, cause like, the reason why you looked for a bigger.
Oh, sorry, how did I, how did I guess at the start, how did I guess at the start that it was divergent? Um, basically, I just thought of like, why would they be asking this question, if, if this word wasn't here, if this word wasn't here, comparison theorem, right? And I just saw this, I would try to evaluate it, right, we'd have no other way to evaluate it, right, but we have to have. We, we're using comparison theorem, comparison theorem can, cannot give us a specific number, right, it doesn't give us a specific number. The only absolute thing it tells us is, sometimes it tells us that it's absolutely divergent, right, so. That's why I just thought it would be divergent, because it says to use comparison theorem, the only absolute thing that comparison theorem tells us is that something's divergent. So I guess it would be divergent. There's no math there, just like, yeah.
So. Comparison theorem's just trying to find us something that's divergent, then?
Yeah, it doesn't give you a number, it won't give you a number, um, it'll only give you like, if, if we found the top function. We found the top function converges on some number, let's say five, right, then the bottom function will also converge on a number less than five. But see, nothing there is tell, that's not telling us anything definite about F of X, we just know it converges less than five. So I knew that, that wouldn't be the answer here, because if that, if that was the answer, we'd still have to evaluate the integral, that wouldn't. That would, that wouldn't really get us an answer, it was just to kind of help us a little bit.
So, like, we found, cause we used a function that's smaller than one over lon X, right?
Yes, smaller than one over lon X, which was one over X.
If that one converged to like a number, then what?
If that conversion of the top one would all, well. Um, y- no, the top one wouldn't necessarily converge, we, we, we would know, we would learn nothing about the top one, we'd learn nothing.
Is that what we would put for the answer?
No, no, then we, we would just literally have to figure out how to integrate this, we had to figure out. How to do that, right, so we would learn nothing about it, right, it could still diverge, it could still converge, we don't know, um. But, because like, you have this function, right, you have like, you have, uh, one over X, which is always smaller than X squared. Or one X squared, oh no, that's not true, it move, move X squared over here, that might not even be true. At infinity, I don't know, but it seems like that's always bigger than, X squared is always bigger than it, but it diverges as you go to infinity. Right, the area keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, so just because this one converges and this one, well, just because this one converges. And this one's always bigger than it, it, that, that, we don't learn anything about the top function, we learn nothing there. Okay, so that's a comparison theorem question. Um. Okay, let's try, unless there's any more questions about this one, of course, stop me if there is. Let's try some of the, uh, Ronak sent me a question. And then we have some more questions in the chat, so let's try this one here. So find the volume of the solid generated when the region bounded by that, 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 that. Is revolved around the X axis, okay, I don't like revolving around the X axis, let's take a look, so Y equals one over.
Your camera's blo- blocking the question, by the way.
Oh, there, is that better?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
X, three minus X. Uh, uh, not DX, but that's the equation, uh, Y equals zero, so, the X axis. X equals one, X equals two, uh, and it's revolved around the X axis, so. Um, let me think for a second. Let's see, where do we have a discontinuity, at zero and at three? Neither of which are in our bounds, so, we're actually okay, I think I can just integrate the, no, no, I can't just integrate, what am I talking about? So, this makes some shape, in fact, I'm gonna try to do this without decimals, so. Uh, this makes some shape above the, above here, so, if I'm revolving around the X axis, I'll do it by, um. By, uh, discs, so, the single disc is gonna have a, so I'm gonna integrate from one to two. Of pi R squared, R is always gonna be that, so the R is always gonna be one over the square root of X. X, uh, three minus X squared DX. Uh, yep, that, that should be right, so pi times the integral of from one to two of one over X. Three minus X DX, and now this is a partial fractions decomposition question, so integral from one to two. Um, I'll just rewrite it here, X over three minus X DX, now I can write one over X. Three minus X as A over X plus B over three minus X, so one equals. A, three minus X, plus BX. One equals three A minus, uh, minus AX, plus BX. One equals, um, B minus AX. Plus three A, B minus A equals zero, three A equals one. B equals A, A equals a third. So I did that fast, but, if anyone has any questions about that, tell me. So maybe take a second look at that. Okay, then. We have, um, I can, uh, do the integration now, so pi times the integral. From one to two, right, from one to two, of A over X, so one third over X. One over three X, plus. One over three, three minus X. Uh, DX, that, so this is pi times, uh, both of these are just lon absolute values, so pi times. Uh, one third lawn absolute value X. Plus one third, actually minus a third. Lawn absolute value three minus X. Evaluated from one to two. Pi times uh lawn two over three minus. Lawn one is zero, that's it, minus evaluated at one, so lawn one is zero. So minus. Uh, one. Siri turned off, that scared me, uh valued at one, three minus one is two, so one. Uh lawn. Two over three. Pi times lawn two over three plus, uh just say two times that, so. Two thirds, two pi over three times lawn two is my answer. So I did that kind of fast, but someone stopped me if that didn't make sense. I think I'll explain the stop part that I did here again. So to just set up the integral, right, the actual integration is just the integration by parts, sorry. Say the wrong thing all the time, I don't know why, um it's just an integration with partial fractions. Um, but to set up the integral, well, right, so our in general, I'm setting up, I'm doing a disc method. Right, so ro- that disc like that centered around, um the thing we're rotating around. Um, is has a radius of that, so the area of that is pi R squared. I wanna integrate that from one to two. Right, all the one X values from one to two, so I move the pi outside, R is always just our function. So it's pi from one to two, our function squared DX. So that goes there. Right, and then, I don't actually need to know what the shape of the graph is here, I just need to know that there's no discontinuities, that's one thing. I just need to know it's continuous from one to two, and it is, cuz this is only discontinu- discontinuity, this is only discontinuous. From uh at zero and at three, so zero and at three, would be discontinuous, but it's continuous from one to two. Um, so that, square the top and bottom. Integrate. And my answer is two two pi over three times lawn two.
Uh, so I I just have like one question. When you like uh, I think it's like the fourth step from like the bottom?
Fourth step from the bottom, I didn't close the bracket here, did I?
Yeah, so how did you get like negative, shouldn't be positive?
Uh, because uh because look at the inside here, it's three minus X. Right, so if I'm integrating, it's kind of what I said up the way way up there, right, long time ago. Um, if I'm integrating something like this, it's not gonna be lawn absolute value that, it's gonna be negative lawn absolute value that. Because the derivative of this is negative one, so here. I'll show you, if I'm just 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 indefinite integrating this, three, three minus X DX. So the one third moves the outside, integral one, three minus X DX. Now I'm gonna say U equals three minus X, DU equals negative DX. So this is gonna be negative a third integral one over U DX, sorry DU. So this is gonna be negative a third lawn absolute value U plus C, negative a third lawn absolute value three minus X. Yeah, whenever the thing that you're in the denominator has a derivative of negative one, then it's just gonna be negative lawn of that.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I I was just having trouble with that part.
No problem, I mean alternatively, you could just multiply top and bottom by negative one, and then that would give you the same thing. Right, multiply top and bottom by negative one, that would flip this, and then you'd have no problem, you can just do normal. Lawn integration like one over X integration. Okay, so there's that. Let's see, what's next, okay, so there's someone posted me in the chat. Okay, I got one like this. Did that question? Okay, let's try this one maybe. So this is, if it goes, does go. So this one. Is, let's see how it goes. So, I mean, it seems like U equals X plus one, DU equals DX. So this is gonna be the integral of one over one plus root U DU. Okay, now, one plus root U. How would I integrate this? Could I do a different use up, could do the whole?
Could we try, could we try multiplying it by the conjugate to see if that moves anything?
Uh, okay. Yep, that might work, one minus root U, one minus root U. DU, integral of one minus root U over one minus root U, oh no, it'll just be. It'll be one minus U. DU. Okay. This will be. Okay, I can split this up into the integral of. One over one minus U DU minus the integral of root U over one minus U DU. So this is just negative lawn absolute value, one minus U, minus the integral. Of root U over one minus U DU, and then this is just lawn absolute value. One minus X plus one, so lawn absolute value X. One minus, X plus one, yeah, yeah, oh, actually, negative X, lawn absolute value, negative X. Um, I still have to leave the negative in there, even though it's absolute value, cuz if it's negative, it'll turn positive. Positive, yeah, yeah, um minus the integral of root U over one minus U. Here.
Wait, can you explain why, like the lawn can have a negative thing?
Like the this negative sign?
Yeah, like, I thought that lawn can't be negative.
You're right, you're right, it can't be negative, but it's the absolute value still here, right, and what if X was a negative number? Then it would still work, because it would be lawn of negative negative five, so it'd be lawn of five, that works. You see what I mean, so the negative sign doesn't necessarily mean that this is a negative quantity in here, because if X is a negative number, it would be a positive quantity. And actually, the absolute value makes it always a positive quantity.
So then shouldn't it not make a difference if the negative is there, cuz it's always positive, what?
But what if, what if this was a positive number, so it'd be, say X was five, then that would be lawn.
Negative five, which would be absolute value of negative five.
So the absolute value still does something, the absolute value still does something, oh no, sorry, it doesn't do something.
The absolute value does something, but the negative.
Yeah, cuz I'm saying if X was five, then this would just be lawn five. If X was negative five, then this would be also lawn five, so the negative. Yeah, you're right, I think, I'm just gonna leave it, but yes, something can happen here that isn't happening, although I don't think it matters, no, it it doesn't matter at this point. Uh, I think what I can do here is say. U equals, U equals one minus U, oh sorry, I can't say U equals one minus U, T equals one minus U. DT equals D, you're sorry, negative DU. So this is negative lawn absolute value, negative X, uh plus the integral of. Um, U equals one minus T. That's not, that's not helping us at all, one minus T over T DT.
Uh, T sub uh root U.
Just root U?
Yeah.
Uh, from from before this step.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, let's try, root U, DT equals square root, uh subtract one, so it's one over two. Uh, root U. Uh, DU.
Uh, I just squared both sides and went on derivatives of uh T squared and U.
Oh, T, oh, okay, so T squared equals U, so two T DT equals. DU, like that?
Yep. And then you get equation with uh the same degree, then you just uh divide.
Yeah, minus integral. T over one minus T squared, and then this is going to be DU is much as two T DT. So the two comes here, and this is just a T squared. T squared, and then divide, you said? Yeah. So, T squared. Uh, plus zero T plus zero. Divided by. Um, negative T squared plus one. So then I say, how, what do you need to multiply this by, you need to multiply by negative one, negative one is T squared. Negative one is negative one. Subtract zero, zero T, just zero, zero plus one is one. Uh, hold on, I'm stuck now. This remainder one.
Yep, it would be just be um minus one.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is going to be uh minus one over, no, no, minus one, plus one over. Uh, T squared plus one, I think, yeah, so.
Would it be T squared minus one?
Yeah, yeah, minus minus T squared minus one.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Uh, DT, so this is negative lawn absolute value, negative X minus two, um so plus two. T. Minus the integral of. Uh, sorry, no, plus two times the integral of one over T squared minus one, DT. Okay, and now one minus one over T squared minus one, is that a, one of the identities? That we heard of before?
Nope, but one minus T squared is.
One minus T squared is?
Yeah.
So.
Oh wait, one minus T squared, oh, sorry, 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 yeah, yeah, my bad, my bad, that's not, that's not.
But I can just factor a negative one, can I?
Oh, I didn't even see the the cotangent, I did.
There's a cotangent one?
Uh.
Or is it one here?
No, can I, I I I'm lost if I'm being completely.
Okay, okay, okay.
Don't, don't listen to me.
Maybe trig, yeah?
What'd you say, sorry?
Maybe trig.
Like a trig sub?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that probably would work, but why can't I just, oh, no, that's the positive side there, nevermind, yeah, okay, just the trig. Negative lawn, absolutely negative X plus two, I'm just gonna put the T in, so T was. Uh, root U, so two root U and U was. Uh, X plus one, so two, root X plus one, okay, plus two. Uh, I'll just write the integral again, one over T squared minus one, okay, so then I'll say uh, T squared minus one is a secant. One, so T equals secant theta, DT equals secant theta. Uh, tan theta, d theta, so this is plus, just whatever, all that. Plus two times the integral of one over. Uh, secant squared theta minus one, is that tan squared theta, yeah. Um, and then over secant theta, tan theta, d theta. So this is um secant theta, tan theta over. Tan squared theta, d theta, one of those cancels. Two. Integral. Secant theta over tan theta, d theta. Uh, let's see what we can do, secant theta is one over cos, tan theta is sine over cos, so one over cos theta over. Actually, just say multiplied by cos theta over sine theta, d theta. Two integral sec, uh cosecant. Theta, d theta. And I don't know what that integral is, what is the integral of cosecant theta? See, I have it on my, if I have it on my sheet. Uh, that, i- if it was squared, if it was squared, that would be true.
Oh, right.
But it is not. Let's take a look. Negative log cotan plus cosecant, I think it's just another thing we have to memorize, um so. This is two, negative two times lawn absolute value, cotan theta. Plus cosecant theta. Plus C, whatever, okay, secant inverse of T. So negative two lawn absolute value, cotan of. Secant inverse. Of T. Um, plus cosecant of secant inverse of T. Absolute value, give me one second, guys, someone's calling me, I just gotta answer the phone quickly, it'll just be two seconds. In fact, it'll just be on my microphone here, one second.
Anyone else feel like their brains turned to literal?
Yeah, it's my brain's calling.
Yeah, dude, terrible.
Okay, I'm back, hello. Okay, uh, so. Secant of theta gives me T over one, right, so secant is one over cos. Cosine is adjacent over hypotenuse, so hypotenuse over adjacent is that. Right, and then this one will be T squared minus one, square root of T squared minus one, so cotan is one over cos, uh one over tan. Tan is opposite over adjacent, so adjacent over opposite. So this is going to be negative two lawn absolute value, one over root T squared minus one. Plus cosec, uh no, cosecant is uh one over cos. Sorry, one over sine, sine is opposite over hypotenuse, so hypotenuse over opposite. Plus T over root T squared minus one, absolute value. Put the T back in. Uh, nope, T back in up here, sorry, T was uh root U, so I'm gonna put this back too, I stopped writing this. And then, uh, just this now after it, so it's gonna be negative two lawn absolute value. One over U minus one in a square root, plus root U over root U minus one. Um, combine that into one fraction if I want to, guess I will. Minus two lawn absolute value root U over root U minus one. And uh, U was X plus one? X plus one. So again, I'll just put this. So negative two lawn absolute value square root of X plus one over. Um, uh, root X. And plus. And there we go. Let's check if that's right, but. It's my answer. Let's take a look. Uh, probably some simplification I can do, let's see. Um. Yes, definitely some simplification I can do, this term. Uh, this this term is right. That term exists and then these two terms can combine somehow, so negative, right, that is two root X plus one. Um, minus lawn absolute value negative X. Minus two lawn absolute value root X plus one over root X. Plus C somehow.
Could we like factor out the negative and then multiply the two lawn terms? Like the uh, the internals of lawn terms?
Yes, but that wouldn't give me exactly what I'm thinking here for some reason. Oh, no, 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 maybe it would. Okay, let's just see, so this is two root X plus one minus lawn absolute value negative X. Plus two lawn, oh, no, I had to factor out a. This they can't combine cuz the two is here, um. Oh, no, no, but I can put everything to the power of two, yes, okay, there we go, that's good, so this is lawn absolute value X plus one over X. Plus C. Cuz the two goes up to be an exponent and they both come out of the square root. And now. This is two root X plus one minus lawn absolute value. Negative X minus one. Plus C, not the answer that's there. Um. Although that is what I got here, effectively the same thing. And then just negative that's fine. Uh, again, not not the answer there. Let's hear, let's see what they did, so here goes X plus one. Bunch of use ups. Okay, let me just see where. Did I do something bad rearranging here, this is right, this term? Somehow, these terms are supposed to combine. Into uh two lawn absolute value. Um, root X plus one plus one. Plus C. Sorry, I guess the C is not part of that. This is supposed to combine into that. And so how would I do that? Let's see if I, that's still squared.
Oh, here, uh, you could just say, um, the the negative X, if we change that to X, you could say that that is square root of X squared. Uh, and then you can use log uh lawn laws or whatever log laws to move that to negative two lawn of uh square root of X and then you can multiply them both. I think, no.
Sounds good.
It did, yeah? But then how are you gonna get the plus one? I don't know.
Let's give it a try. I like the sound of it. Um, so. Yes, forget about the negative. Because sure. Um, then it's negative lawn absolute value square root of X squared. So I'll I'll move that right away to the outside here. Minus two lawn absolute value. Uh, root X plus one over root X. Plus C. Two. X plus one minus two. Lawn absolute value root X. Plus lawn absolute value root X plus one over root X plus C. Uh, close bracket and this is two root X plus one minus two. Uh, that would just cancel, so this is lawn absolute value root X plus one.
But we don't have the plus one there. Hmm. Could it be something wrong with the uh? The reimplementation of our uh trig sub? That's usually where I miss.
Let's see. Secant inverse of T. Secant inverse of T. So cotan of secant inverse, secant inverse, so if if secant theta is T over one, so secant is one over cos. Um, adjacent over how about it, so hypotenuse over adjacent, that's right. Cotan is adjacent over opposite, so uh adjacent over opposite. That's right, and then cos secant is. Hypotenuse over adjacent. No. Oh, yeah, wait, hold on, what? Cos secant is no, cos secant is one over sine, nevermind, cos secant is one over sine, so um. Hypotenuse over adjacent.
T over T square, yeah, 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 we we got that one right.
That's right, and then this is just. Just that, and then I start simplifying. Yeah, so it's not that part. Well, we can go from the beginning. Take a look. Although this, what kind of question is this, it's just a difficult integral, I guess, there's no like. There's no partial fractions in this, so let let's just let's take a look. Let's see what maybe let's see what Wolfram Alpha does, let's go step by step and see if we're doing the same thing, so. Uh, U is X plus one, so we get um. One over, yep, and then. Uh. Oh, they immediately do something different. Yeah, imme- immediately do something different.
Wow, what did they do different, like where do they diverge from us?
So. They get to this point. This point. Right, but not don't multiply by the conjugate. And just say at this point that. Uh. T equals root U. So then somehow from that, you know, doing different colors, you can see it's different. Here say T equals root U. So they get the integral of T over. T plus one, I guess because D T is one half.
Would that be two T over T plus one though?
Oh, yeah, it'd be two here, yeah. Be a two in the front there, yeah. And then this would be. Because. D T is one over two root U, so how are you allowed to do that? Multiply top and bottom by root U, yeah, that's that is what they did. Multiply top and bottom by root U. Yeah, multiply top and bottom by root U, so then you'll get root U over root U times that, so then you can do this. And D T here, and then from here. What do they do from here? Um. Oh, do the long division, it'll be one minus. Yeah, let's 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 just do it how they did it quickly. Actually, much much shorter, so um. Again, I say they as if it's a person, it's. Wolfram Alpha, but. One plus root X plus one DX, okay, so. Um, again, U equals X plus one, D U equals uh DX, so this is. Integral one over one plus root U. Um, D U. From here, multiply top and bottom by root U. Right, so it's gonna be root U over this times root U. So now I can say um, T equals root U, D T equals one half root U. Well, you know what I mean, I said that wrong, but you know what I mean? Um, so then this is going to be two integral T over one plus T. D T. I can now divide this. Uh, I guess I'll do like this, T plus one, what do I multiply T by to get T, well, one, one times T is that? Zero, uh, one times one is one, so this is going to be. What do I multiply by T by to get T, one? One times T is T, one times one is one. So subtract it, it's gonna be T minus T is zero, uh, zero minus one is minus one. So this is going to be. One minus one over T plus one. Yeah, I think so. Yep. So it's gonna be two times the integral of one minus one over T plus one. D T. Two times the integral of D T minus two times the integral of minus two. Times the integral of one over T plus one. D T. So this is two T minus two lawn absolute value T plus one. Plus C. Two. T was uh root U, so two root U minus two lawn absolute value. Root U plus one plus C. Two root. X plus one minus two lawn absolute value root X plus one plus one plus C.
Wow, that is a lot easier.
Yes, that was a lot easier. I I feel like our answer, maybe we made a mistake somewhere there, but I feel like our answer is very close. So. It would have like I, we just made a mistake somewhere in here, that's all it is. Right, we just made like one.
Yeah, cuz it's almost the same.
Right, it's really close to being the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? So. Yeah, anyways, but there you go, there's that. Um. That's how you do that one. Yeah, that.
Wait, what did you do? Did you get the right answer the second time?
Second time, so I start. Here, yeah, so everything is the same, the trick was multiply top and bottom by root U. At this step. Right, which lets me do a use up for what, T sub of T equals root U. D T equals one over two root U, so then that lets me do this. So then I just have this. Divide. And then that gives me one minus one over T plus one, which is both very easy things to integrate and then you just put all the use ups back in. Right? So that's that one.
But like, what was the purpose of multiplying the top and bottom?
It lets me do this, this substitution right here. Because in order to do the substitution, you have to have a root U in the denominator. See, right, you have to have a U root U in the denominator, and so then. Um, that gives me a root U in the denominator. Gives me a root U in the nominate in the denominator and the numerator too, but that's okay, it just turns into a T. Right?
Okay.
So I said before, the only time it's useful to multiply top and bottom is E to the X, obviously not. Now, we have another situation where it's useful to. Multiply top and bottom by some function, so. Here's another situation where that's useful. Dividing is always good. Simplifies it. And there you just do a bunch of use ups backwards again. Yeah. Okay, so there's that, um, let's see, any other questions that people sent me, yeah, that mean there's definitely questions that people sent me. Um. Let's take a look, so we have. This one done, this one done. This one done. This one. Uh, this one looks like a a trig sub question, isn't it? Am I wrong? That looks like a trig sub question. I would do a trig sub to solve this. Sorry, it's so blurry, but it's just the picture is blurry too. Actually, I think I can just do.
All right, I'm heading out, thank you, man.
Yeah, all right, have a good night, have a good night, I'm probably done soon, so.
Yeah, my brain's turned to mush, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, okay, have a good night, have a good night.
You do.
Hey, fun, what's going?
Hey, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you do integration?
How?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, how about first let me just like make sure I'm finished this live stream and then I think we are, we are done, we are done, and then I can explain to you. How to do integration. Um, yeah, so any other questions that people want me to do regarding the test tomorrow? Okay, I think we're good. Um, I, this one looks like a trig sub question, so might not be, but. We'll just leave it for now. Um, but yeah, okay, well, well.